All right, well, welcome everybody up today. Huge crowd, thank you for being here. To get our planning session started. Work sessions for February. I've asked Mr. Pledso if he can lead us in the play.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Good. I'll be there. I'll be the pledge person. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us be here today. Thank you for letting us live in a society where we can make decisions and do what we think is best for the better of our school system and our children. We're going to give us clear eyes, pair of hearts, to make the decisions that we're going to be faced with today. Thank you for all the people that you put in our path. Your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Pledso, and we could like to get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, Mr. Whitaker.
I would like to immediately add this, the math, the math gang's thing.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to. That's right, we were supposed to talk about that as discussion work. Do we have that?
Dr. Denley could talk about that. She sent the board an email a couple days ago.
Yeah.
Yes, we'd like to talk about it.
Okay.
You want to add that and make it 2.13?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we can make it 2.13. Well, I put the Smart Bus implementation with the hourly pay increase back to back for Miss Samples.
We'll make it 2.13.
That'd be fine.
We'll put it right before the Smart Bus implementation.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, is that good? So a motion to, to amend it?
I'll start my motion.
Okay, so you'll make a motion to add that and stay with the, okay. And then second, Mr. Hudson, are you good? All right, all those in favor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, no. Thank you. All right, the Academy.
Board members, thanks for being here today. We've got to link the agenda. Audra is, she's not going to be with us today. She is working really hard, taking care of self this week and for the next couple of weeks. So you continue to keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She is a strong woman and we are certainly behind her 100%. I have invited Ricky Loes today to talk about low wealth funding, the low wealth formula. Mr. Loes is a retired finance officer from Cumberland County Schools. I first heard Mr. Loes speak at a school boards conference in Greensboro on low wealth funding. So it's probably been 10 years ago. And that's, that's why I know he's, he's, he's an expert on low wealth. And I use that term, I don't use it loosely, I use it to, he is an expert. In Cumberland County Schools, they're a large district, but obviously, Mr. Loes has been working in public schools since 1985 and has a long history with low wealth funding. So he's going to spend the first 30 minutes or so based on questions on, on low wealth. And then the second half of this presentation, I want to talk about our local funding. And I'll go through the presentation that will kind of really set us up for the next two and a half, three weeks as we prepare for our funding request to the county commissioners and get ready for our meetings with county commissioners on February 28th. So that's really what's going to outline the next hour or so. So, Mr. Loes, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for having me. I'm going to pass out a little handout that we can follow. I think that's easier than trying to look at a PowerPoint because everybody will have the same information right in front of them. I've handed, highlighted the areas that we're going to discuss. But yeah, as far as being an expert, I've just been around a long time. I don't know about the expert part, but because I've been around since 85 with dealing with school finance and other issues, but primarily finance. And so while we pass these out, I'll give you a quick history of low wealth funding. Back in the late 80s and early 90s, there was a push by school systems to get more money from the state because they didn't have the local tax base to, the local tax base to be able to get the kind of monies they needed for what they determined to be a basic education. So there were five school systems that, is it okay for Stan? Okay. There were five school systems that were the plaintiffs in that lawsuit, and Cumberland is one of them. So I've been involved with this since the very beginning. We were the, I was the fiscal agent, so I took care of all the legal fees and actually went on some of the visits to other states and so forth, but we looked at how they were funded. So I've been involved with this low wealth issue for probably well over 30 years. Did some presentations to the General Assembly explaining the allotment formulas and why they did or did not work and things of that nature. So that's just a little bit of background before we talk about low wealth. The sheet that I handed out to you, or three sheets actually, is that, that the spreadsheet that's used to determine if you get low wealth money and if so, how much. So this computation is done every year for all 100 counties. Now, I want to emphasize the information is based on 100 counties. So the city systems get a pro rate of share after everything else is done. So when we go through it, you'll see that, but everything's based on 100. And then at the very bottom on the third sheet, you'll see how much goes to the charters and the city schools and so forth. But it's also data that's about at least two, if not three, years old because the database, by the time the public school form, I mean by the time DPI gets this information, is able to put it together, it's usually two to three years old. So you look at it and say, oh, we get more than that, or we get less than that. It's not going to be for this current year, it's historical information. Okay? So I'm used to teaching little classes or whatever, finance folks, so I like, that's why I don't do the handout. I just want, this will be very informal. So if you've got a question or you want to say something, just blurt it out, okay? And we'll just take, handle it then. It's not a formal, like a presentation, so you just go ahead and say what you need to say and I'll try to answer the question or respond to the comment if I can. So you see on the first page, step one, this is the information they get on each county as related to its wealth. When I say wealth, they're looking at tax base, they're looking at sales tax revenue. That whole first section deals with, with wealth. And then they say, well, how does that wealth compare against the state average? How does that compare against everybody else? So when you get down to that first highlighted section down there, calculate a total county revenue available per student. Certain counties at 79% of the state average. Okay, so you're below the state average on revenue per student. Okay? But you see, it's fairly consistent. You don't see a whole lot, if you go back to the five or six years that are represented here, you don't see much of a variance from, from one year to the next. It actually went up a little bit this past year. So in and of itself, that doesn't mean a whole lot, other than this is the information that gets us started, that determines where you fit compared to everybody else as far as revenue base. So then you go to density adjustment. They're looking at how many, how many kids per square mile in your county are going to school. So if you, if you have a, a large county but very few students, it helps you. If you're a small system geographically with a lot of students, it hurts you because you don't need as many buses, your bus routes are quicker, things of that nature. So there's a 10%, well, we'll go over the percentages in just a second, but this is one of the factors that determines your, your low wealth. If you go to the per capita income, this is the one that people look at and say maybe it should be weighted higher. I'll backtrack for a second. The first low wealth formula was revised in the second year by the General Assembly. There were fewer districts that were getting low wealth and those who didn't had folks in the General Assembly that could get the formula changed. And so from the year two on, it's been like this, but in the first year, it was weighted differently. Just, just as, doesn't mean anything as far as right now, but just to give you a little bit of historical perspective. So the per capita income, you know, how much money do your folks make, which means what's their ability to pay really? And so in your case, you're at 82.67% of the state average. So on all three of these factors, you're below the state average. So if we go down to the bottom here, the height, the area that's on the left-hand side is highlighted in blue, those are the weights. And so what they do is take each of those three factors, assign them a weight, and then add it together to come up with this number at the very bottom. And your number is 77.36%. If it's less than 100, you're eligible for low wealth. Okay? And you're eligible. So that's the, that's the first thing. So good, we're going to be able to get some money. If you look at the weights, only half of it's based on per capita income. And so obviously, if that weight was higher, you'd probably get more money because you're way well below the per capita income at the state average. But that being said, right now, you're eligible, based on our discussion so far, you're eligible for, for low wealth. Any questions on that?
What's the weight again, 50%?
On the left-hand side, you'll see the weight, 40% for the first factor, 10% for the second, and 50% for the third one.
Yeah.
I might have highlighted it too dark. You may not be able to read it, I apologize for that, but that, those are the weights that go with the three yellow highlights. And to give you a big perspective here, a county like Dare County on the Outer Banks has a huge amount of property tax value, but very few residents. Okay? So for them, they have a very low tax rate, they can generate as much money as they want. Durham County, most of, about 90% of Research Triangle parks in Durham County. Okay? So they've got a, they've got a built-in tax base that they can generate a lot of money, and they do. They get almost $6,000 a student locally in Durham. So over four times what you're able to generate, you're almost five times what you're able to generate here. So you look at, and that's not even the worst example. Like if we use Hope County, Robinson County, Green County on the eastern part of the state, they would have even a bigger spread. So the question, what are they, what are they able to do with Chapel Hill, Durham, Dare County that you can't do in other counties? So that's really the reason why all this came about, but just to put it in, in perspective. So let's go to page two. So page two says, all right, you're eligible, but are you going to be able to get any money? You've got to meet one of two criteria to be able to get the money. One is your tax rate below the state average, I mean above the state average. And so in your case, your county tax rate is the effective rate, they use a statistical computation, they call it a sales ratio, sales tax ratio, to come up with a number. We have no control over any of that, but it's the same for everybody. So when all said and done, they're saying that your tax rate is 55 cents, but the state effective rate is 63%. So what that, I mean 63 cents. So what that means is if that was the only factor, you wouldn't get any low wealth money because your tax rate's below what, what the state average is.
So it is penalized for not taxing the public?
Yeah, because the state's putting the money in, the state says, we'll put some money in, but you've got to make the local effort to match what you're able to match, what you're able to generate. And so they've come up with that, there's a reason how they came up with the number, I can't tell you how, they came up with a 63 cent tax rate. So they're saying if, if you're charging above 63 cents, then you're making what we consider to be the, the effort. You're making less than 63, so less than 63 cents, then you're not, we don't consider that to be making the effort, there's wiggle room in there. Not to say that it's wrong to do 55 cents, just saying the state's saying, we're not going, we're not going to help you until you get to that point, except for the second option. This is how y'all need the effort. So on the second one, they look at the state appropriation by student. So if you look at that, well, we'll start with the first blue area first. What's the amount per student that you're getting from the county? Remember, this is also includes the two city school systems as far as the total amount. So the 14 million that they're showing that you get is what you get plus what Mount Airy and Elkin, I'm sorry, drew a blank there, Elkin get. And so that's the combination of all three systems. So then they take the ADM from all three systems and they determine, here's how much you're getting, I mean, here's how much you're getting per student for all three districts, just the county money, not the, not the supplemental tax. Is what it's supposed to be. Does that 14 million, does that sound about right for all three systems?
We get 8.9.
Is that about right? Okay. They're not supposed to include the city tax in that, so I just want to make sure that wasn't being included in there.
But it also includes the supplemental funding that they give us on top of the per, no, I'm not talking about supplemental tax. County commissioner can give us additional supplement.
Oh, yes. Yeah, if it count, if it's coded and you're, if it's coded as an appropriation from the county, even if it's highlighted, you know, set aside for a specific purpose, then that would count.
Would count, just not the supplemental tax within, okay.
That's correct. So it should, it should be in there.
So that's the, that's not capital outlay?
No, it's not capital. It's just operating, but no capital.
So it's a current expense annor or something.
So it turns well by you.
Yes. Yep. And so we go to the second section, it says, okay, what's the state average? Well, right away, you can see you're, you're way below the state average. The state average is almost 2,300, you're getting a little over 1,300. So right away, you're $1,000 a student below the state average on local. So what they do here is they take the, remember the number we had on the first page, the 77.36%? They say, well, really, all we can really expect of you to be able to generate is 77.36% of the state average. We can't expect you to be at the state average. So take the state average, multiply it times the 77%, and they say you should be able to generate $1,766 a student. Okay? But you're only getting 1,342. So you're, you're really at about a 400, not quite $25 difference per student between what the state says you should be able to come up with based on the wealth of the county versus what you're actually receiving. So because that number is only 76% of what you can gen, of what you could generate, you're only going to get 76% of what they allot to you for low wealth. And we'll talk about that in the next section. So what you'd like for that to be is 100%. That means you get every dollar that the state has coming to you. But just to put it in perspective, if you were at 100%, your county appropriation would be closer to 19 million instead of 14 million for all three districts. So there's about a $5 million spread between what the state says and what you're actually getting right now. For every, almost $200,000 that you would get in local money, you would get about another $50,000 in low wealth. So you don't have to go all the way to the 19 million, but it's a pretty good return on investment. You get about the 25, a little over 25% return on investment. The other thing you have to remember too, we're dealing with a historical number and the numbers, it's a moving average. And so that's based on these numbers. You've got to remember, other folks are getting increases during, during the year. And so that changes all of the numbers. And so if you're staying still or not moving much, that's going to hurt you up at the top where the state average is going up. That percentage of 76 is going to go down to 75, 74, 73. So not only are you not getting the local money, you'll continue to lose some of your low wealth money too if you don't at least make some effort to, to maintain or to increase your funding a little bit.
So the steps are either or, they're not?
It's either or. So if you just meet one of them, so you're, you're always going to get some, but you may be getting less, a smaller amount than what you're entitled to if you, if there's not additional funding. The, the, let's look at that column where it says 76%. If you go all the way to the left, you can see just as recent as five years ago, you were almost 84%. So you've lost 8% of your low wealth funding just because the local couldn't maintain it, 83.6. So even if you weren't trying to catch up to everybody else, if you were just trying to maintain, when I say maintain, I don't mean the same dollar amount, I mean to maintain the same percentage. You would have, you would have an 8%, almost 8% differential on this column over here on the end, which would generate more, more money for you. It's unrealistic to think that districts that don't meet the first requirement can all of a sudden in one swoop, you know, come up with the additional money. So we always try to stress, it can be done gradually. And not that you'll never reach it, but you can always at least make enough of an increase so you're not losing what you're already getting. So even though the total dollars may have increased a little bit, that's because the state put more money in the pot. It doesn't necessarily, it's not because of your percentage, because your percentage has come down. And once again, we'll look at that in just a second.
Percentage of availability.
Yes. Yep. And so this year, the state put over $300 million into the, into low wealth. It used, it's gone up substantially over the last few years, but just as a side note, it's still, if they'd used the original formula, that number would be a lot, would be a lot higher. But not complaining, it's just that the money, there's two issues. One, the state's not putting enough money into the schools, which is putting pressure on the local districts. I heard y'all, I think y'all said you had something to say about an hourly wage increase for your, that's the perfect example of the state not putting enough money in at the local districts. And so you're having to try to find money in your local budget to make up that money. And that's not just Suricane, that's all 100 counties, 15 city systems. And so I do a whole nother presentation on that, but that's, that's for another day. But anyway, the, the state's putting all the pressure on boards of education. So the 76% is your, is your number right now that we're dealing with, 76% of what you're entitled to. So when you go down to the bottom here, the county as a whole, counting the two city systems, would have received in the yellow amount down at the bottom, almost $5.7 million if the, if the 100, if the 76% was 100%. Instead, the county as a whole is getting $4.3 million. So you got a difference of about $1,360,000, give or take a dollar or two.
So is this where you're saying we're missing all 800,000 when you take out the Elkin amount here?
Yes. Yep. Your percentage of that million three is 800 and almost $900,000. And once again, it's not a number you're going to, you know, be able to generate or get in one fell swoop, but if there was an effort to at least get those, the 76% up a little bit more, you could get some more low wealth money.
Mr. Loes, I have a question. There was one year we fell below a threshold and the county had to give us a little extra money. Got a letter from, from Raleigh D. Is that, I'm assuming that number is a moving target? Or is it?
Good question.
I'm asking, where's that threshold at?
That's the, that's the supplanting provision. And so what that means is if the county doesn't at least maintain the same amount of effort they gave you previously, that's considered supplanting and they'll penalize your low wealth allotment. So that's another reason why if there's gradual increases, you know, each year as opposed to staying stagnant or going below, you stay away from that supplanting provision. But that's what, if you, that's like with the, I'm pretty sure you're getting the money for teacher supplements from the state and they use, they use that same provision, if you put, if you spend less money than what you were previously, you're going to get penalized. So they use that same provision for this. What they didn't want to happen is if it was, let's say 20 years ago, you were getting $10 million, low wealth came in and was going to give you two, they didn't want counties reducing your allotment by a million dollars or two million because you were getting another two million from the state. So it's to prevent, it's really supposed to be to supplement over and above what you were getting to take care of those things that we were talking about previously, to help you meet that, this education.
Is that threshold a set number or does it vary?
Changes every year based on the, because each year, your per pupil's going to change because the estimate that we have, as you know, in the spring is not what we actually end up with. And so by the time they do this, they've got actual numbers. So you don't want to cut it so close that, you know, a few students one way or the other is going to cause you to be supplanting. But they do have a maximum, I don't know if I put them, they do have a maximum loss provision for 10%, but I think that may just be for the tax rate part. But anyway, the, they're having some districts that did supplant. I don't know if it's been any recently, but that was, has been an issue. And you can make it up, like you said, you can do it by just getting a lump sum from the county and then you came into DPI that we gave enough to take care of the supplanting If we go to the last page, the only thing I want to highlight there is the very last section, and that shows how much you're getting, which is how much is going to Elkin and Mount Airy. So in the, in the blue part, oh, and the charters, I forgot about that. And so the, the total amount is those two blue items added together. But the amount going to you is two point, according to this, is 2.8 million. This was a planned allotment, so this may not be the amount you actually received, but this was at the time they sent the spreadsheets out, it was the spring before the allotments actually went out. And those usually, usually change. The logic stays the same, but the numbers might, might change. But the, the thing behind the low wealth is so that the counties don't use that, it's like Title I and II, you don't want to supplant in your federal dollars, same type of, same type of provisions. I know I talk fast and that was, that was quick, but there's also another study that we're not talking about today that looks at local finance, if you want to compare to other districts, called the public school form. And they do a local study every year. It's about time for the new one to come out. Usually comes out about January, February. And it compares, they have five tables that they looked at and compare to every other district. And just the one I looked at, I always like to see where the district fits that I'm getting ready to talk to. And so on your actual, what they call local appropriation, you're in the bottom 10 in the state. Just to give you, no, you may have already known that, but I was saying, it just surprised me, but I think it was 92nd is what the table showed in the, in the state.
And that's based on county, not the systems?
That, actually, you're, I'm trying to make this too confusing, actually, you're a little bit lower than the 92nd because it did include the city. And so when I back the city out, you'd be about 95th and 96th. Yeah. Because in that particular table, they include everything cumulatively. And so anyway, that, that's just another source of information and they've been doing that for, they actually have a report. It's not just the tables, it's actually a report. And what they're, the gap between the have and the have-nots has increased every year since the low wealth money has come out. You know, the intent was to close the gap, they were told there's not enough money in the low wealth. The gap is getting bigger and bigger between the haves and the have-nots. And so it's not a good situation, it's only going to get, you know, get worse. There were some districts where they'll increase their local appropriation, you know, hundreds of dollars per student in one year. And others, I've been with one district, they've had the same local funding for eight years in a row. No increase for eight years.
How do we rate as, in comparison of counties as far as the adjustment?
There's 30 districts that, that don't get 100% out of eight. 80 districts get low wealth money. And 30 of them have some type of an adjustment. And your adjustment is probably in the mid, about in the middle. There's a lot in the 80s and some in the 70s. So you're probably right, right in the middle as far as the adjustment goes. And it's usually for the same reason, it's usually because of the tax rate, which they kind of go hand in hand. If your tax rate's not high enough, you're not going to get enough money in that second section to be at 100%. But obviously, if the tax rate was higher, there'd be more money, hopefully it would filter down to the school system. But yes, 30, 30 out of 80 have some type of adjustment.
So for a rural county, we're, I think our sales tax revenue for a county are pretty good shape, we're just showing 99.5%.
Yep.
So it didn't hurt us any, but it did help us any.
Yeah, the sales tax is really probably what gets you over the hurdle, so to speak, as far as tax revenue. Historically, back in my day, counties only looked at property tax revenue. And the sales tax is such a big issue now, sometimes that mentality is still out there where sales tax is for the county, property tax is all you have access to. Really, it's a pot of money, it's called the general fund. And the general fund is where the sales tax and the property tax money go to. And so what the state looks at is how much of that general fund is going to the districts. And so that's one reason why yours is a little bit, a little bit lower, but I don't know the history here, I'm just speaking of in general terms, so I don't know any of the political issues or anything, but the sales tax money is usually the one that, that causes the, the issues because the, the property tax is the only thing that some, some boards look at as far as what's available for the.
Why is it always so against maybe a quarter cent sales?
I know.
Just for schools.
Yeah, and I'll give you.
I mean, this, this, everybody's going to be paying, you're going to have to put it on groceries.
Yeah.
And it's the only fire tax.
Yeah.
And but you got, you know, somebody out here that's got a big business, playing a huge amount of property taxes, don't have any children at school. And then you've got families with four, five children in schools that, you know, don't own a house or.
Yep. It's called control and power. So that's why, this goes back to, and I digress for a second. I'm from Cumberland County, which has Fort Bragg, largest military base in the country. And so we don't have any industry. We've got one, we've got a Goodyear plant, tire plant, but outside of that, we don't have industry, we're all retail based. have industry, we're all retail based. You talk about generating some sales tax dollars, we can do it, okay? So for years, we've been asking to have the authority to generate the sales tax. So our tax rate's eighty-seven, seventy-nine and a half cents. Because we don't have any other, we don't have much property other than residential, which as y'all know, is not how you get your money. But because we can't raise the sales tax anymore, and we have people come, we're the regional hub, so to speak, for retail, but it doesn't do us any good because we can't raise the, raise the sales tax.
Galax, Virginia has that. I don't think it has it on grocery, but they have, if you go eat in a restaurant, I think Galax or a fast food place is like twelve percent, and a lot that goes to schools.
Yeah, we're kinda controlled by how much money we can raise and how we have to spend it. When you think that the money comes down from Raleigh, that's not flexible. Some of it is a little bit flexible, but for the most part, we're told how we have to spend it, then we're told how much we can, how much we can raise.
It's hard to get money that's earmarked for selling. You know, there may be money out there, but you know, you get tired of going begging for it every year.
Yeah. Well, I tell folks we're professional beggars. Because we don't know, we don't know how much money we're gonna get from local, we don't know how much state we're gonna get, we don't know how much federal, we're professional beggars. So every year about this time, you start begging and hope you get enough to keep going, we're panhandlers.
So this formula was developed to keep, make sure that counties are paying their fair share without tapping into that low wealth funding. Sandbagging from them.
Yes.
And then saying, well, we don't have any money available. But you've got, in our case, property tax is really hurting us, it seems like, and the retail sales are helping us.
Yes.
We've got a lot of people that come into Surry County to shop from other county.
That'd be true, yeah. Because they're looking at revenue as a whole on here, so if you don't have a lot of property tax money coming in, but you do sales tax, one's offsetting the other, maybe not dollar for dollar, but one's offsetting the other, so that's helping. On my side of the state, the tax rates are very high. Once you get to the other side of Raleigh, until you get to the coast, there's not much property tax value. So your poorer counties have the highest tax rates. Scotland County's over a dollar. And they reduced theirs because it's getting to be a burden for those that did live there, but theirs was over a dollar. Hope County, they all have to have high tax rates, so they don't get much money for it, but they have to have high tax rates.
It's like I remember hearing that only thirty-nine percent of Surry County residents pay property tax, sixty-one percent are...
You know, they'll tell you, a house doesn't pay enough property, no matter where you live, the property tax on a house doesn't cover the, what they're getting from services when you throw in X number of kids, garbage and all the other services that come with it. So your money comes from either the industrial businesses, the huge plants, or it comes from sales tax. Not all of us have a research triangle park. I know I talk fast, but is there any questions? If you think of something, of course, if Don Rees can afford a question to you, or I'll be back with him as soon as I can, but I'm just trying to get, keep you on schedule.
Mr. Loeb, it's one thing that we've done in the past is really try to think about a budget, and we did last year in terms of a three-year plan, of trying to get a little higher in three years, not one year, but obviously, moving forward that, you know, I think two years ago, we were looking closer to fifteen, sixty being that number, and now it's jumped up to seventeen, seventeen hundred being that number. So anyway, that just kinda gives some context of why we laid out the plans that we've done in the past, using low wealth kinda as a target figure, not that we expect the state average of twenty-two hundred dollars a child, but just trying to get to that target number of a hundred percent effort, helping us really maximize this formula and bringing in another nine hundred thousand dollars or so to the district. Thank you for traveling up here today, going through this in such detailed fashion. Board members, any last questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me, I always enjoy giving up. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Very well done. I think this is the third time I've heard a presentation in different forms. For the first time, we really don't, we can, for every dollar that we can increase locally, we can get about a quarter, twenty-five cents, twenty-five percent of that. So now, I mean, at least we have a number we can put on that we can increase our low wealth.
And that number will, every year, the number should be in the ballpark. Yeah, you get a better return on investment than you do putting it in the bank, let's put it that way.
Or the bottom, right. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, have a safe trip, bye. Board members, we'll continue with the Finance Academy report by jumping into Finance Academy number two PowerPoint presentation that Mike Chilton has put together. Do you have that, you got that pulled up, so I'm on the first screen?
Number two, okay.
Can we put this on this one and going forward, can this be on public content? Instead of executive content? That way, if anybody else wants to see the exact same thing we're looking at, there's, we hiding the thing, right there it is.
Yeah, absolutely. You can put it on there. I can make this which now.
Yes, I can.
All right, so the purpose of today is really to focus, hyper-focus on our local dollars and try to give you background information on the current expense and the capital, where those monies are spent. So I wanna break down this, the current expense budget, capital outlay budget, we are gonna talk about the pre-case supplement. We're gonna, Aldra's put together supplemental fund scenarios for you to consider, and I am hopeful that we can make a decision there. And then we need to really begin thinking about what our future funding request is gonna look like to the county commissioners, and I laid out a timeline at the end that kinda outlines what we need to do. So if you'll take a look, I'm on slide number three, I believe, local current expense. So to, what we're talking about is the twelve hundred and eighty dollars per student. So last year, that twelve eighty per student brought in right at eight point nine million dollars. There's the three hundred thousand dollar supplemental funds on top of that, plus you see the charter school appropriations, Aldra budgets two hundred and fifty thousand from county fines and forfeitures, one hundred thousand in interest earning on investments, plus you see the fund balance appropriated. So that local current expense revenue is eleven point four million. So this is just the budget.
But that includes us basically wiping out our fund balance?
Not entirely.
Just the appropriated part?
Appropriated, yeah, this is a budget.
Yeah, gotcha. That's what it would take to get to, okay.
Yes. Do we have a budget that quarter of a million in fines for, we get that much?
Have we got a monthly budget report like we had last time?
Not on this budget. So if you look at the next page, local current expense budget, so as of now, we've got three and a half million, three point seven million in fund balance, that was at the end of June. Aldra did budget approximately half of that, and I say she budgeted half of that doesn't mean she's gonna use half of that. If you remember, last year, we did add money back to fund balance, and we actually budgeted around the same amount last year. So through the year, we do have cost savings. I do think it's important, and Aldra, if she were here, she would tell you this on the second bullet, we need to maintain a fund balance, we can't operate without a fund balance. Obviously, cash flow is a part of that, emergency needs and payroll. So when we get into the fund balance questions, I can give you some examples, but it's just important for us to have at least a certain amount of money there, so we're not running in the red. If you look at what Aldra has calculated, that appropriated fund balance in fiscal year twenty-four is approximately thirty-nine percent of what we have in fund balance. So that puts it in another perspective. If we didn't make any cuts this year, this coming budget year, if we made no cuts and we received no increase in funding, essentially, we would spend that three point seven million of fund balance in one year. So obviously, we're gonna make cuts, we're planning on making cuts, but I mean, that just kinda puts it in perspective of how much money we have. Take a look at the pie chart. That kinda just outlines where that eight point nine million dollars is being spent in our school system. On the, the biggest portion of that's being spent salaries and employer-provided benefits. And so the supplement that we pay our employees, both classified and certified, the regular supplement, that's twelve percent of the forty-five percent of that pie. The next largest chunk is our maintenance staff at nine point two percent. The next largest part would be our front office staff at around five percent. So you can kinda see that most of that, the majority of that, that eight point nine million or half of the eight point nine million is spent for salaries and employer-provided benefits. And then utilities, natural gas, water and sewer kinda jump out at me at sixteen percent as a pretty, pretty good-sized expenditure within operating our school system. And then all those other necessary items, school and office supplies at eleven percent, repair parts, fuel, gas, oil, tires at five percent. So let me just pause there and take any questions you may have.
So this has nothing to do with the money we get from state or federal, this is just a piece of the local, we still have to pay for salaries and benefits, are those positions not covered by?
The state.
The state.
Yeah, so our maintenance is a good example. The county commissioners are required to build buildings, that's not a state revenue. So all the folks it takes to keep those buildings up are also not a state position, so those are hired locally and paid for locally. That's a responsibility of the county, and that's true in all one hundred counties.
So help me understand this, because I'm trying to wrap my head around. So state money, you get X amount of allotted positions personally, from principal down to teacher, everything in between. So our local money, we're using, I understand, of course, we use that for maintenance. Does the state not give money for office in the school, for principals? I mean, how do they expect you to run the school? If local is in essence for the structures, how do they, how are you supposed to outfit the school with front office staff that you have to have? Is that only, I'm asking, is that, is that part of their equation that they build in to where you get this many teachers for this ADM, you get this many principals for this ADM, this front office staff and things of the such included in that?
Let me back up and say, about sixty percent of our state funds are in position allotments. The other remaining dollars are in dollar allotments. So there's two different state funds in the way they're calculated, dollar allotments, position allotments. And of course, Aldra is always moving people to maximize the position allotments over the dollar allotments. So that's just one caveat to that equation and that explanation. To your point, as far as the way those other dollars are implemented, we're not giving any funds for security, so we are, you know, all that's local. Custodial help, those are, we do give positions for custodians, but the formula, I'm not sure takes care of all of our custodian positions. And I would believe front office staff is the same, I'm not sure, Kevin or Deanne, are you?
It's not enough.
Yeah, I don't think it's...
Because most time, like data managers are always, are in local, that's not a...
Every school has to have one?
Yeah, or however, every school system does that differently. But that's something we choose to have at every school, and so that comes out of local, so.
Like, I know every school needs a front office assistant, I know every school needs a finance officer, every school, you know, you've got to have this, it's only us for the custodial staff and security. But I'm asking, is it, what is the equation, is there anywhere that we can move out of Because we, the low wealth funding is great, we all know they're not gonna get the sixty-three cent tax rate, we're not gonna get a five hundred dollar free per student. So how do we, how do we maximize this? And that's what I mean, I don't pull the other fan, is what does the state allot?
Well, I'd have to ask Aldra specifically, and I'd be glad to take her that question. I know at our schools, we have two office people per school, essentially. We have cut receptions. Once upon a time, every school had a receptionist plus the other two office staff, and in fact...
So it's pulling another budget.
That's right, and in fact, there's one elementary school where we don't have two people, we only have one, we actually need to add there to be, to be fair. But what I had, I can say this, as an elementary principal, once upon a time, two people in an elementary school are absolutely needed just based on student needs, parent needs, and all the emergencies that come up during the given day. Two people, really, really, you don't want somebody that they're by themselves. And if the one person is a finance officer, you don't want her counting money out there on the cabinet and on the counter while people are coming in. In fact, I mean, that's, so two people, and that's really what we've got, is two people at each school on average.
Yeah, if you could find that out, that'd be, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to find that out.
That's all I have on that.
We just don't, my point in showing you this, we don't have a lot of wiggling. There's just not a lot of other areas, if you look at that pie, that you could say, well, where can we find other sources to maybe offset some of this? There's just not a lot of other wiggle room.
And what hit me, and this gentleman's speaking to us, that this low wealth fund has actually widened the gap and made it worse for some counties? What, what did he mean, how was that for me, what he's talking about?
The low wealth funds were there to try to help some of the poorer counties, and what he said, now the gap is wider between the durms and those that are on the other end of the spectrum.
We're getting about pretty good, we've got six thousand a child. Can you imagine that?
I said, that didn't work, can you imagine that?
So basically, what he's saying is those twenty counties that are not getting any low wealth are getting richer faster than we are in the low wealth county, because their income's going up faster than ours is, even with low wealth funding included.
There's another pot of money that small counties get, we got it in Ash County, if your population was under thirty-six hundred, I believe, there was a pot of small county money that you got on top of low wealth. So Ash County gets that pot too, plus they're funded pretty, plus pretty big difference per student.
So that's definitely...
Yeah, the small county is still in effect, and you can understand why, Ash County's, I mean, it's, geographically, it's almost as large as Surry, with twenty-five thousand people versus seventy-five thousand or seventy-one thousand in Surry. So any other questions on that current expense pie chart?
I kinda got one, I'm stupid, but why are we sending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the church? Why are we doing that?
We don't have tours.
Yeah, why? I don't understand.
So those students live in our district, but they choose to attend the charter school. So the charter school sends us a bill for those students on a monthly basis, we verify it, and we send the check to them.
That's because the state requires us to do it, we don't do it voluntarily.
That's convenient.
We're basically their finance department.
And it's also checks and balances, Mr. Hutchins, checks and balances to ensure that those students actually live in Surry County, that they live in our district and they haven't moved to Stokes County or into another district.
Have we started getting any quotes on our insurance yet?
They are working on that. One of the issues we run into is flood maps. Yogi called Aldra last week, so on the property, general liability, transportation, he's working on that with Aldra, but the flood maps have complicated that because of varying lines and varying policies on these flood maps.
Have we looked at any other agencies or we just have...
We have not looked at any other agencies.
There's sixty-two. The charter book helped him, so that means that...
I mean, I'm not saying they're not by agency, I'm just saying, they don't represent every insurance company that there is. With that large of an expense, I wouldn't get... With that large of an expense, I want to get, yes, we can.
Close to a million dollars.
Yeah.
It's not that many people out there who want that type of thing.
Or they're more of war.
I'm going to skip over the low wealth slides. You've already heard that. And I'm going to jump to the capital outlay. This is the hundred and fifteen dollars per student that we receive. Last year, we got about eight hundred thousand dollars. Special projects are separate from this funding source, and lottery funds are not included in this figure. So this is the one fifteen. You can kind of see where these funds go. And just in, in thinking about this, we have eighteen campuses to maintain. Surrey Community College takes care of the early college and the expenses for the early college. And they're getting ready to renovate the T building where that, that, that is located. And actually, the early col, our, our offices and classrooms will be moved, I think, beginning this summer. And then our virtual school, obviously, is housed at Central Middle School. So you can kind of get a picture of where those funds are, are being spent. Just to think about that contracted maintenance and repairs. If you think about our gym floors that are refinished every single summer. We pay for that out of that funding source. Water purification. We, we spend a lot of money on water, wells, testing water. Carpet removal. We have been trying to remove carpets that are twenty years old and replace those with tile. We, we kind of have a rotation. Robert's been working on that. Insulation at one of our elementary schools. So obviously, lots of repairs on, on those buildings. If you take a look at equipment, that's where those interactive panels that we purchased, you've seen those Promethean boards. So that's where those will be taken. We also added swings at Mountain Park Elementary School during this new construction. They lost their swings. We left the old swings over at the park so that wouldn't completely deplete that park. And we bought new swings and put over on the new playground. So obviously, that's my point. New equipment for our schools is going there. And you can kind of, all the other, all the other budget items are, are pretty self-explanatory. Are there any questions there?
Would this be also where we would take furniture from that we, we talked about a basic four replacement every year?
Well, it, it, we don't have a furniture budget. But it would mean we would cut one of these other pieces to add furniture. And I do think that's something that we need to look at. And Robert and Doug and I would agree. I think that's also could be an item that we take to the commissioners as a special request. Really, but we do have needs. And I think as you've been in our schools, you, you've seen some of those needs firsthand with, with the furniture needs that we have. Any questions there? Okay. Let's take a look at pre-K supplement. We discussed this on multiple occasions. As you remember, last year, there's a, a state retention bonus. It changes every year. Last year, it was an additional supplement, was about two thousand dollars. This only went to instructional support staff. It did not include pre-K teachers. Obviously, Mr. Whitaker and I met with our pre-K teachers in this room, heard their concerns. You heard their concerns. And you voted earlier in, I believe, October or November to pay those pre-K teachers out of those three hundred thousand dollar supplemental funds that were allocated from our, from our county commissioner. You asked me and Audra to get the new cost of what it would cost this year to pay those pre-K teachers, and that cost is forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's one decision. We typically, we, you approved last month to go ahead and make that payment to all of our other teachers in April. Audra and I would like, if, if it pleases you and you approve to do so, we would like to pay those pre-K teachers in the same time period. We've already paid them for last year, but we would keep them on schedule this year. So she's also given you four scenarios to spend the remaining supplemental funds. Well, I think it's like two hundred and eighty, two thousand, two hundred and ten thousand that's remaining.
Were these the same scenarios that were provided to us back?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I do, I do want to say that you heard Mr. Lopes discuss supplant, the supplanting issue. And obviously, you know that that's something that we were concerned with from last year. Audra and I are concerned on scenario one and two. If we do pay those extra supplements in this year, but yet we didn't pay them next year, then that could create a supplanting issue for us.
Or is this in total compensation?
Yes, and I'll just kind of give you an example. Even though on scenario two, you're going to pay certified staff, they're not eligible for the PRC O seventy-one bonus, but they are, they are in the instructional PRC code. So the calculation is flawed because they're in the instructional PRC code, but they're not included in the bonus. That's the argument that Audra and I tried to make last year, but yet you, you remember, we still remain on that supplant list.
So even though this is, we may not get this money next year, three hundred thousand dollars. If we give it to certified staff or classified, then there's a chance of being all those supplant lists.
If you don't give it next year.
But if we don't get it next year, then we can't. Because I, I'm the one, just me personally, I think, I like the idea of giving the four hundred dollars to all classified staff. Because time and time again, they're the ones that, and, you know, I'm married to a teacher, but they, they don't get bonuses. And I would love to see, even though, I wish we would give them the twenty-seven hundred dollars like everybody else is getting. So I personally would like to see the total four hundred go to them.
If I divided this thing out correctly, and I don't know that I did, but if I divided it out correctly, that I showed paying five hundred and twenty-five, is that correct? Five hundred and twenty-five, on the two hundred and ten thousand.
I think you have to also calculate benefits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It probably is that, but she's, she's deducted benefits.
Okay, because I'm looking at that four hundred. And that negative two thousand you and I talked about earlier has to go away. So that couldn't be but three ninety-five.
Yeah, it's going to be less than that.
Five, twenty-five times three ninety-five comes out to almost even. Or may, may come out two even. Same thing on scenario two. You have to get rid of that. And that's, instead of a hundred dollar local supplement or two hundred dollars, it would be one ninety-seven fifty. If that makes any sense.
Now, the five hundred makes sense because you've got eleven hundred employees and six hundred teachers. That's where it's about five hundred.
Five twenty-five, I think that's the way it come out if I divided it out correctly.
Without benefits.
Four hundred, four hundred times five twenty-five is two ten. And again, and I'll mention this, based on the conversation we had earlier. I go down to past scenario four. I then see supplemental fund actually received, no, I mean, on the past four. Things to consider, it's important to maintain a fund balance. So we, in my mind, that says we cannot go to zero. Right? And we cannot go to zero without, that, that means we need, even need to move funds to cover what you're saving, which I think is a really good idea. Because a lot of times, those guys are the ones that feel like they're left out.
Now, bonus comes from state. Again, those are including just instructional staff. No administrative in schools. Leadership, any leadership.
No. Includes our teachers, school nurses, psychologists, school counselors, social workers.
And no principal or assistant principal.
That's defined by the state. Those, those are the people that are in that instructional staff line on PRC or with the program report code. That's, that's how they're calculated or identified.
So that's the additional supplement, right? Because they're typical, they'd get one every year that's.
They get a local supplement. That's your twelve percent that's in that, that piece of pie. This is on top of, this is a, a retention bonus. It's, it's program report code O seventy-one. Last year, it was two thousand dollars. This year's going to be even more than that. Ninety, ninety-six or ninety-eight counties in the state are getting this. The big five originally didn't get it, and now I think it's been reduced down to maybe the largest two aren't getting it. Because they're getting a pretty good-sized supplement from their local.
Interesting that the, the additional supplement is larger than our regular supplement. Is it about twelve fifty a teacher for local supplement?
Yeah, probably. Twelve fifty, somewhere between twelve fifty and fifteen hundred is the average.
Is it based on percentage? What is, what is that percentage?
Oh, no, it's not based on percentage. We're way from a percentage. Because the percentages we're just getting, where we couldn't keep up with it. So now it's just based on years of experience. It's a cut, it's a flat rate based on the years of experience. If, if you took a fifteen-year teacher and you calculated their supplement, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about three point six percent.
About five-year teacher.
Be less than that.
So the more senior, the higher the percent.
Yeah, and I did that because I was trying to compare our system to the other two. Because they do percentages. And we don't.
So earlier today, I said I was going to ask a question, so I'm going to go ahead and ask the question. What do you recommend and why? This, this fund balance thing has to be addressed. If we can't operate at zero in the fund balance, how?
Well, so, so Mr. Hutchins, Audra and I have spoken about this at length. I look at this, I'm looking at this on the whole picture. I, I want to give every employee every dime I can give them because we've got great people working in this system. You saw them today in action at Pilot. I want to give them more because we can never pay them what they're worth. I just know what's, what's ahead. I look at this S R funding clip that we're getting ready to go into, and we know that we've got to make some significant cuts. I want to make sure that our district is well-positioned in the future. In thinking about that, I would recommend to the board that we look at option number three to try to use the remainder of what's left to build, to build fund balance. That's, and if Audra were sitting here beside of me, she would, she would also make that recommendation. We want to give our employees all we can, but I, I just, I don't want to, I want to leave us in as good a shape as I can at the end of this fiscal year so that we don't have, we don't have to make some tough decisions. And I don't think we're at that point, but it's still, we're five months away from the end of this year. There's emergencies that could happen. There's things that could, you know, we had a water pump that went out at Cedar Ridge. That was a pretty significant expense. We've had water heaters that have gone out at schools. A couple of years ago, we had, we had a pretty big quote-unquote fuel leak. It created some sizable damage. So I just, I, I just have to be ultra-conservative in thinking ahead on putting that money back in fund balance.
So again, that brings up my next question. Number three still leaves remaining supplemental funds, zero. Fund balance is zero. And we can't have zero.
No, no, no. This is just this three hundred thousand dollars.
That we got from the commissioners.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're still, we're still operating on three point seven million fund balance right now, but we're going to have to use some of that this year, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now that answers the question. Because at the bottom, it says remaining funds, zero.
I guess my concern is, you know, it's called retention fund that we're receiving from the state. I'm just from a standpoint of retention of classified employees. Is that, is that a concern? Maybe Tommy can, or Mr. Hutchins can, tell us what?
How, you look at things in Forsyth County, but.
And what have you had on that need for, for those funds to go to classified staff? For retention.
Well, I can give you a quick, I've been standing outside in the cold these last few days, and I've seen several come across with maintenance uniforms on, and I'm asking how they're doing. And they say, thank you for the support you've given us over the last three years. Because they know they didn't get it, what they deserve, and they're years up to that. So I'm hoping that goes some way toward retention for a classified staff. But you're right, it's, we still got to find a way to keep. And I told, I told the board when I came on, that's my number one, after educating and making sure our kids are safe, as classified staff, we've got to help them somehow because they just weren't, we're not competitive.
We've had, you know, we've had several issues, and it took all the hands on deck in a few situations, it seemed like. Because you have some of our schools, I mean.
Think about the power outage at Flat Rock that they had to go through.
It's, uh, they're, keep things going.
I just, I just want to, if we see that, a need there for retention bonus that would come out of this.
From, from experience, private versus public, there's a, there's a difference in the pace there. Everybody knows if you want to, if you want to make money, you step out into the private world and you're, and, and the big joke is you're going to work a whole lot harder, number one. And number two, you're going to make a whole lot more money, yet at the end of your career, you will have nothing. Because unless you build it up yourself, private, the private, you just don't get the benefits that, that the school system gets. But when you continuously, as a, as a classified employee, see everybody else getting this bonus and this bonus and this bonus, and you find it, we, we hear every excuse in the world for why we can't get it, and I understand. But if you can't pay money, that ain't there. Or that is not there. But anyway, you, you can't pay it. So what you end up feeling like, and I've seen it over the past big ten years, is they feel like they've been left out of it, and we're always the first ones. You, you know when the cuts come, but you know where it's coming. I mean, every year, we're going to hear the same thing maintenance-wise now from the budget starts getting tight. It's stop spending. How do we do our job if we stop spending? That's the questions we always ask. How, why, why do you automatically think of this one before you think of us? So we've got to kind of keep that in mind because, you know, in my mind, these guys are always thinking somewhere in the back, I can make more money somewhere else. And, you know, it's easy to say benefits, and it is true. But when you're raising two kids, and you know you can get five hundred more dollars over there to finish paying your grocery bill and your heating bill, you tend to want to run to it. So most of the guys that we have in this county that I've seen so far, and even where I'm at, are doing it because they feel like it's a, it's a calling, just like the teachers feel like their job is a calling. I don't, I don't go in because I need a pat on the back. I go in because I need, I, I need to do something to help, so.
Well, I mean, you, you see it probably with the people that you work with. What kind of benefit difference do we see from what we can provide and what they can? So for example, I've got a friend that went through the open market place and got her life, her health insurance lady through what I guess was called the Obama, Obama plan, whatever. She's paying five hundred and fifty dollars a month on a single individual. One of our employees pays twenty-five dollars a month for a single individual. They don't smoke. So what, what's the industry benefits compared to what we do? Do you know what a plumber, would a, would a plumbing contractor pay all their medical? Or pay some of their medical or pay any of their medical?
A lot of times, they pay zero. I've worked in places where there was no benefits, including holiday pay.
So that five hundred and fifty dollars is income to them?
Yeah, to them, though, they see that as a gas bill or a grocery bill or a hassle to house payment. Or, of course, now, five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars ain't a third of that.
In the, in the private industry, it's, it's a competitive now. You've got to pay some benefits, and you're not going to get employees. And, you know, you're also getting a salary.
And, you know, you're also getting a salary that's probably two to three times higher. So if you have to pay your own health insurance, you can do it. I mean, trust me, I understand putting money back. Y'all know that I want to save money more than anybody. I just think, since it's not money, it was already budgeted extra, I guess you could say. I think $200,000 would, while it is a big number, would go a lot further in good way in my mind to our classified employees.
And I think we too have got to figure out that 3.7 fund balance, like we heard, if we get no increase, and we cut nothing, we've got zero. We've got to make sure we find ways for that. And we've got to get, we'll get something hopefully from the commissioner over the 128. And I think we're going to see a different idea of how they do the supplemental and the capital down the road, so it may be a different formula. So, and then we're also hopefully going to have a little bit more control over our lottery funds, a little bit. And I know that's a different fund. Yeah, that sort of makes it all confusing, because how do we look in the future?
Well, it's just hard for Surry County to compete. They pay more to the teachers than we can pay them. It's just, I feel like though, that's a better working environment, that's how we retain good teachers. It's a better working environment in Surry County schools now. And that goes a long ways. My father said, you know, "We can never pay a teacher what they're worth." A school psychologist, or a nurse, or whatever. A nurse must already can lead Surry County schools and do bad business somewhere. How much can they make more than Surry County schools?
That does.
$25, $27.
So are we going to vote on this at this board meeting? Is that the deal? And then move on, or?
I'd be happy if you made a decision right now.
Like Audrey?
Yeah, yeah. Or you can wait, if you want to put it on the March agenda.
I'm all for whatever you guys want to do.
So you're in support for one and three? Is that consensus, or somebody else having an idea?
You're saying one, with the stipulation that it zeros out at the end, meaning we move it instead of 400, 395, and it works out to zero instead of...
Just whatever it is, we've got 300. If there's 208 left after the pre-case, because I think it was... It was a wrong call for the state not to include pre-case teachers in that rule. So I like the idea of doing a supplement for the classified staff. You know, you and me, Mr. Conservative, don't want to spend the dime here, I'm saying let's spend it. I believe it's that, because we've got people that are behind the scenes, unappreciated in most things. They don't get their pension on Facebook nine times out of 10, for a pat on the back, or how do you do? We try to, but that's not always the way these positions feel. So $400, and that's before taxes, so it's not like they're getting a new car.
Well, but they're not getting all that, right? Because that includes the benefits. Is that true, the 400?
Yeah, I think, no, I think that's after benefits.
That's before taxes?
Yeah.
And retirement.
That's just my, you know, I'll do whatever you guys want to do.
Go a long way for camaraderie in the system.
I've narrowed down my line between one and three. I see both sides, I can see how both will work. I think, as long as we understand as a board, when we do this budget, we're going to have to address that fund balance. I could support them wanting to give them that $400. We just need to make sure that we know, we've got to make up that 210 somewhere as we spend this year.
We're going to save that, don't you?
You're going to cut that off, that million-dollar beetle? TJ's got somebody we don't know about.
No, no, I just know you're telling a company, you're thinking about looking somewhere else when the rates come down.
That's interesting, and I'll tell real quick when we move on. I've got, I got a tank of insurance companies last year for home and auto, and it moved an independent, went to, I might not even name their name, but a national company. The one I moved from is now independent, they sent me a quote, said, "We'd like to have you back." Guess who they quoted? That same company. So they're all out there, you know, shopping them around.
Oh, yeah.
So what are y'all prepared? Do you want to wait till the next meeting, go ahead and do it now, so Audrey's got something to work on to figure out which one of these scenarios that we can use this supplemental for?
Well, I think it would help them decide now.
I think so, too.
Well, I understand it's a supplement, it's what we're calling it. And we use supplement to supplement what the local employees are giving.
I know it's good to add it in the balance, that we could fund balance to boost that, but to me, I could go with nothing more, and I'd recommend it.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I recommend it.
So scenario number one, do you want to leave it as it is, or lump that down to make a 208 to balance it out to zero? Instead of the 210? We've got a net zero minus 2,000 right now.
I would recommend is just let Audrey work out the numbers, because you could.
Could go up a little bit.
It could go, I mean, it's all based on the number of employees at the time the payroll's cooked. So the way the retention bonus went for the teachers is you had to be employed by February 1st. So if we were to bring somebody out, I mean, and then if somebody left, I mean, it's just, I think, if the spirit of your motion is to use the remaining, after the pre-case supplement, use the remaining for the classified.
That's great.
I would use that vague language to let Audrey determine what that is once she knows the number of employees that it's going to impact, because it could increase or decrease.
It sounded exactly like your motion, didn't it?
So is our opinion, is I'm supposed to restate your motion, okay? So basically, out of the $300 supplemental funds we have, we're going to take $92,000 to pay pre-case supplements. The remainder of that would go toward classified staff stuff. Does that sound fair? Okay, now that I'm clear about it, at least I am. All right, we got a motion to do what he just said.
I'll second.
Got a second? You got it?
Which scenario?
Scenario number one. Number one, yeah. So Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Bledsoe. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you. I think that's something we need to do.
So the next thing, board members, just, and we've already said this, you've got the things to consider. I think it's outlined in steps, so if you'll take a look at that slide real quick. What we have today is the 19th, we've got the commissioners retreat on the 28th. What I would like to do is sit down individual with each one of you between now and March 15th to just go through a list of potential cuts that Kevin, Deanne, myself, and Audrey have come up with. And then, all that's before the March 15th budget work session that we've got on our calendar. We have to have our funding request due to the commissioners on the 29th. We have our next work session is March 25th. So my guess is we're going to be able to make most, get all that work done on March 15th, but we've got the 25th as a backup if we don't, and there's additional information needed. So that's just kind of our outline. What's hyperlink there is a school funding request form, it just shows you, we've got, you know, we talked about, should we ask for it in one big lump sum versus per student? Well, if you see, they want to know your ADM total request, ADM total request.
Yeah, we can't, we have to, we can't, we don't have access to it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Let me do it.
All right, well, this is all it is, it's just, this is the form that Audrey and I have to fill out for the county that outlines what that ADM number is per student.
So we'll put a total request, but essentially, it needs to be, yeah. It's going to be, that's going to be based on estimate right now, anyway, right? We don't know what it will be for next year.
We don't know the ADM number, we don't have our planning allowance from DPI, but there's a good chance by March 15th we have those planning allowances. Yeah.
So what, how much did we get for people like you?
128, yeah. Which was a $20, $20 increase, I believe? $44,000 total.
$44,000 increase is to say even, where inflation's going.
So that leads me to the February 28th county commissioner retreat. I sent you a presentation that I just put together, it's in draft form, it's actually, it's green. It looks a lot like the one, I took a lot of what I've shared with you already today, and I wanted to get your feedback on what do you want that meeting to look like? We have one hour with the county commissioners, we're going to eat lunch with them from 12 to 1, and then we're going to sit down for this one-hour presentation. So give me some feedback on what, do you like that presentation?
She emailed this.
I did, it was in the superintendent's FYI last Friday, and I believe it's attached to this.
Yeah, it's in here. Under the February work session meeting, oh, that's the, it's under the local funding overview presentation, the first half. You see any drop downs on that?
Looks like this.
Well, from experience of going through this, and I actually talked to a couple of commissioners today, and I mean, when I mentioned the date, we're coming over, their eyes just glaze over, they said, "You know how long that day's going to be?" Because they get to hear everybody. So I think the simpler the better, without getting through the ones where we dug in deep. I've been through the ones where we said, "Here's our overall plan, this is what we'd like to do, we need your help." I think that gets a better reception. So I like what you got here, and we need to refine any of the information on it as draft, I like that, without going too deep into it.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, I just wanted them to see the pie charts that we shared with you, to see where we're spending those local dollars, that was part of that. You've got, there's not a lot in there on low wealth capital. I think it's important for us to talk about, we are coming off three years of Esser funds, where we have added additional staff to help our students. Some of this Esser is maybe too much details, but I wanted them to see how much money we got with Esser 1, 2 million, Esser 2, 6.9 million, and Esser 3, 15 million. I wanted them to see how we use those funds. Also wanted them to see the amount of money that we've put into capital, which is about 2.2 million in HVAC, and see all those items, because those are items that we've reduced off of their responsibility, if you will. So we've listed those, and it may be too much, because an hour goes by quickly. I kind of outlined the long-term capital needs, obviously, we've got the renovation of the high schools is a big, big need. Robert's got some special projects that I don't have listed here that I will get listed. And then on March 20th, we've got the tour of our high schools with our board of education and the county commissioners, which I think goes without saying, but it's going to be a time for us to just, I think, reiterate the importance of what our plan is on this long-term capital need. And then the next slide, I think, is something that's been important to this board, is its safety. And I think it's a time for us to thank the commissioners for them adding SROs to our schools. I think this is a time for us to talk about how many schools don't have full-time SROs, if that's a long-term list or need. I think this would be a good time for us to talk about safety vestibules, and Robert's going to talk a little bit about that later this afternoon. And then I just put the word "other." If there's other safety items that you want to list as a priority as a board, then certainly let me know, and I'll change that slide, and we can be more specific.
In my mind, I think it would be good to show on this pie chart that you've got, the local current expense budget, break that out, that 45% of salaries and benefits, and everything that is included in that. Because that's half roughly of what they're giving us. So let's show them, because, I mean, we all know, we're not getting $17,000 a kid. We're not up to 63 cents on our tax rate, I don't think. But let's show, okay, we came to you, this is what we did to the funds. We're not wasting any of the funds. And just show bare bones, this is exactly what we're doing, or what we want to do. In my mind, and I think bringing up we're 100th out of 115th.
We just started 95 out of 100 counties.
Won't do us any good. The low-wealth funding, I mean, looking at it from a pure business standpoint, if I, if you cut a man, say, if you'll... You're going, if you spend 3.5 million, I'm going to get 800,000.
Plus there's a 3.5 million.
Right, I'm saying if, so that's what, 3...
We said 25%, every dollar we raise it, we get 25%.
I'm saying if the county spends 3.4 million, then the school system's going to get 800,000. Extra.
Extra, right, so we get 4.3 total, we get the county's, and we get, yeah, I see what you mean.
But I'm just saying...
25% investment's pretty good, is that it?
I understand, trust me, I understand. I try to get people to open CDs. I just think that it should be more of, you know, this is, let's show that 45%. This is how it's breaking down, you know, and when we do this here, current expense comparison, they all know where we're funding at, they all know that. So I don't think that that does anything for the cause that's worthwhile.
That's, do they really know how we are compared to other counties? That's what I'm, I mean, they know where our balance is.
I believe they do.
I know, we, on my slide for presentation today, we had two counties, it was Yakon and Wilkes and Sturgis. Stokes not available?
So it is available, but that finance officer wasn't in this group chat that got all this information.
But I think surrounding counties is arguing.
I remember right at Stokes, it's like 2,500, it's way...
I mean, we just took an average of surrounding counties.
That's...
Where we at? Where we at, this point, if you got square? Rankings, like we're...
We're 22nd.
22nd, we're at the top.
Of this region.
So you're doing today good, but not enough.
Well, what I'm concerned about is if we fall to 42nd in the state, what are people going to say?
Exactly.
So that's 66th in the state, what are people going to say?
That's where I look at it as, is Surry County schools have done a phenomenal job of not being like the majority of the state that wastes a lot of money. You know, Surry County is not going, and, you know, I mean, what does it take to be number one in the state? What do they get per child?
Durham's second behind Chapel Hill, I think Chapel Hill's 7,000 a kid. You heard him, he said Durham was 6,000, and it's...
But I think you both make an interesting point. We don't want to risk getting to that over 42nd, and then say, "Now we need more money because we're behind."
Tell them what Eddie Harris told you funding would be.
He said that, Mr. Harris has said that time and time again, he doesn't understand how we do it.
He said he doesn't understand with the amount of money he did, how you get the performance of the children that you get, like anywhere from 15 to 20 something.
Right.
And ranking the schools, and rank 100th in the country. Now, what would people in this county would be saying if Surry County school would rank 100th academically?
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, when you're doing that well, you're not going to get millions more in funding locally.
You just made a point that I think we can use, as we go to talk to them, we're not wasting. So trust us that we're not going to blow the money, that if you give us additional money, and it's not all about the dollars. Dollars are not going to mean success, I don't think. But if you give us a little bit more, how can we make sure, we're going to use it correctly? We're not going to waste it.
What we have to do in my mind is not, we have to take any sort of dial-out of trust us, because I think historically, there's a mistrust in between commissioners and boards of education. Not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but it's the way it is. We have to show, hey, this is what we're doing with our money.
And that goes a great, that goes a long way right there.
Break that down and show, okay, you give us this much money here, is exactly what we're doing. I would a whole lot rather see in-depth of that pie chart, and the 45%, how that's broken down, than the low-wealth funding formulas, me personally. If I'm sitting there as a commissioner, and I'm not, but if I'm sitting there saying, okay, we've got this much money, well, we've got jails over here, and we've got health and nutrition over here, and the school system, well, they've done a fantastic job of what we've given.
So why would we give them more, they don't have such a good job?
Exactly. I mean, and you know, nobody's going to bring up the idea of, let's raise taxes.
About the election year.
Nope.
Grandma used to say, "You catch more flies with honey than you do with vinegar." And I think to myself, if we approach this meeting, and this is a conversation I've had with that, if we approach this meeting as partners, I think we're going to be a whole lot better than pointing out their misgivings or their... You understand what I'm saying, we walk in...
you understand what I'm saying? We walk in and we start accusing them of not doing this to help us out. Everybody is now on the defensive. The one thing that I believe, this county could use is conflict resolution. We go inside and we, and we decide as a group, boat group, that we're gonna do what's best for the students. And when we do that, and we're partners, or rather than accusers, then I think we're gonna be a whole lot better off. Just, just my, and that's my opinion. We, if our kid, we tell our kids, work out, work out, conflict between yourself, and then we argue with them back and forth, what are we actually teaching our kids?
Well, I think over being, sitting there three years, you've done it for thirteen. I think we go in not accentuating the negatives. I think we go in and say, this is what we have done, this is what we need. Um, but this cer, this scenario is not equal, I don't think, to, uh, uh, two people that are on equal footing.
Well, no, I agree with that, but.
We, we gotta take what we get.
If you're the one, if you're the, if you're the little guy in the big fight, uh, you either need to learn how to throw rocks out of a sling and use their sword to kill them, or.
We don't want you.
You learn to get along and get big.
Well, and like I've said a year ago, you know, I think we need to have more of us getting together with them, talking with them, versus being the broken relative that comes around at Christmas needing money. You know, let's, let's look at our long-term plans. Let's, and in between us talking, you know, we should, we should, we shouldn't say in every meeting how bad we're funded, in my mind. I, I think that does nothing to push the calls of, of whether it's, like I said, good, bad, or indifferent. I don't think that helps us as a school system.
Well, I think we've always went in and just laid out the facts in a professional way. You know, the finance officer goes in with him, you know. It's a fact that teachers get paid more down there in Elkhorn.
Right.
You know, it's a fact that, that other school districts, there's no school district that's funded as low as we are that, that's around us, and we're always, I felt like in a professional way. Having to argue with them. All you can do is make a, make your point.
Well, and there's never been, uh, and I, and I think your point, Mr. Goins, it's, it's always just been about the numbers are what they are. I think in any time that I've used that comparison, it's honestly to build our people up and to say, look at what, look at how good you are with, with the few dollars you have, because honestly, we have to do a lot of cheerleading on the side lines with, with our principals and with, uh, our staff because they, they see what other districts have and what we don't have. They see, and so there's a lot of affirmation that we have to give our people because in some respects, they are doing more with less, and we, we've got the same expectations. Um, and, and I think that's just, uh, it, there's a fine line that we walk, and we're always trying to affirm, um, and, and build up versus tear down. So it's never meant to, to show anybody up. It's always meant to really reinforce our, our people.
And they don't help us. You know, we ask for eight, eight hundred or nine hundred, and they give us maybe three or four hundred. To help supplement the teachers a little bit more, just because other teachers next door get paid more. So the question is, they have. They've taken that negative point, if you wanna call it that, and looked at it and said, anyway, you're right. It's hard to keep the picture from Surry County. And then go to Elkhorn Valley and make more. So they've been giving us some money to help offset that.
And eight years ago, when we, we did that first facility plan, and we came up with the plan, they, they gave us twenty-five million to, to redo those three elementary schools, which was a huge step in the right direction. I found some old pictures the other day of Franklin, um, in two thousand and eleven. So it, 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 it is a partnership. It has to be.
And we said, we said in two, uh, related genes recently, this was all of, you know, providing the funds.
They, they fund the special projects almost every year because of the information we take from them, pictures and shows of, you know, what some of the sales is look like. So I don't think it's, uh, I'm not worried about letting them in and argue with them. You just have to show them what you need. They say they have to solve, you know, what they can.
Well, I'll continue to work on that presentation, take the, the advice you've given today. If, if between now and then, uh, there's things you, you see and, and hear that you'd like for me to add, please, uh, please give me a call or text or email, and I'll make those changes.
Well, how long before we need to make a decision between, how much we're gonna ask for first people?
So we've got till.
Thirteen, fourteen hundred or?
We, we have till March twenty-fifth. We have till the twenty-ninth to, to get that document in. So I'm gonna meet with each individual board member and, and just talk about cuts, and we're gonna meet again on March fifteenth at another budget work session, uh, to really start honing in on what the ask should be and will be. And typically by then, I'll hear from the other two superintendents what they're gonna ask for. Uh, sometimes we've all asked for the same amount, and sometimes each district's asked for something different. So that's, uh, that's kinda been different here in the last few years. Uh, we got a new superintendent, Elkin, and Mount Airy will have an interim, so, um, let's have to wait and see where they're at.
Have you all put together a, a budget packet for us, like we talked about last year of this is what we're, this is what's making up the budget?
What should be?
Like last year, whenever we gave us our first budget as new board members, I said, I, I can't efficiently make that decision without knowing what's going into. So next year, please have more information for us as far as you're getting all the budgets that are coming from the schools, from the different departments, things of that nature. I would like to see all that that's coming up to us instead of just us saying, we got twelve eighty last year, let's ask for thirteen hundred. We asked for this, and capital, why do I have to ask for this? I, I like to see a little more meat to it. But that way, you know, I can go and, to the commissioners and say, look, this is what's made this up.
So you wanna, you wanna have a copy of all the school requests and all the director requests?
Yes, I would like to see all the budgets that, the information that you are getting, that is coming, that you're compiling, and then putting it in one big pot to bring to us. And I apologize for snipping here.
Would that, would it make more sense if we didn't have the non-discretionary, obviously payroll? We can't change that. Are you talking about all of it, or you're talking about just what the local requests are? Cause that's really all we've got a choice over in this request. You're talking about this pot of money here that's in this chart.
For our, for, yes, for our budget requests, cause we can't, we don't request everyone's stuff. Yeah, just the information that you are compiling, that you're bringing to us. So I'm not asking for any type of new reports, anything to be done, and just what you are getting or backing.
Yeah, I'm guessing breaking that forty-five percent now will go a long way in showing us where.
Yeah.
The requests are gonna be. Cause when you come right down to it, the requests from the schools don't make up a large amount, right? Because you've gotta run the system with that money. It's not just what comes from the president.
Cause the majority of our money is, is in personnel. Whether it's state, federal, local, it's in personnel between salaries and then benefits. Like, for the state dollars, ninety-four percent's in personnel. So there's very, very little wiggle room, right?
But this is, we're just talking about the, the, the local funding.
Local funding is, is more, is flexible. Yep.
Is fully discretionary, in essence?
Uh, for the most part, yes, yeah.
I'd like to ask the commissioner or somebody about the, you know, the lottery funds. Are they ever gonna start coming back? This board, so they can decide. I'm not gonna be here. So they can decide. Well, this man comes in, I just have to go begging for it.
And you want me to add a lottery slide to the presentation?
I would.
Good idea. I'd like for that man to come here and let this board decide. Really have to go begging for it.
Yeah, I thought we got it this year.
Well, they released some of it, just, but we still have to get their approval, the credit.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I understand.
They said there, there's a pot you can have, but we still want you to come and say, please. Easy. I'm, no, I'm just, I'm just being honest.
Okay. Well, that gives me plenty to work on.
You're in free time. What day do you wanna meet with us?
I'll, I'll work with Doug and, and try to, try to, she'll reach out to you individually, and we'll sit together. I know Monday's probably better for you.
That'd be a good day for me.
And Doug, Wednesday after nine thirty would be good for me. Thank you.
Is that it, or is it?
No. We're only doing the second.
We're only doing the second one at thirty.
We've got a ball game tonight.
Scott's house, six thirty at Surry Central.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So I'm seeing two, three policy twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-fifty.
Yes, sir.
Then I'll give up the agenda. Here we go. Hey, Mr. Hutchins, you wanted to discuss these two?
I do, and, uh, all this brought up as, uh, at, of her conversation or a comment that was made at the last board meeting, Mr. Lassiter, uh, feeling he's been denied access to, um, North Surry in particular. Twenty-one, twenty-two, let me, I wanna, I wanna get in it. Twenty-one, twenty-two doesn't stay either way, really. We, we, uh, he now has been excluded because I, I'm gonna be honest with you, as board member, I went and invited him to go with us on the walkthrough on Monday. That was me. Not as a, not as a form of endorsement, but, uh, trying to figure out a way to end what we had last, what was it, the fifth? The board meeting when he made his comments, how do I eradicate that, or how do I get rid of that? Because it, it looks bad. It looks like we're trying to keep somebody out. Me and Mr. Johnson had a conversation about, uh, these particular policies, and he informed me that I should avoid making it look like I was in, I was endorsing a candidate. And I'll say I sent out a, um, email and was a little disappointed that I got no response back to it, to be honest with you. Because I feel like I put it out there that, that we needed to talk about this thing. As a matter of fact, it was one of three in the past two weeks that I felt like nobody seems to be responding to. Mr. Quicker did give me a call on one, and I thank you for that. And I'm just glad they responded on one of them. But this is a board, and we need to work together as one. So here's, I'm gonna just tell you what I've come up with, and what I think would be a good idea. I would like to amend these policies. Because we're gonna have this every time that an election rolls around where somebody's gonna want access to the school. Now, I don't, I don't mean to come in there and pass out cards or palm cards or any of that stuff, but meeting the principal, the staff, so forth and so on, you know, walkthrough, here's what I propose we do. Let's pick two days or one day before the primary and invite every candidate that is running for the school board office to meet with all of us. And we all walk together through the schools so that they get, we'll hit one elementary school, one middle school, one high school. And that way, they get an introduction to the school system. It doesn't look like anybody is promoting anybody else. It just looks like they're getting to see the school. And so, because I'm gonna tell you, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a campaign issue. People are already, I've already heard that one, one gets to do this, and one don't get to do this, and one gets to go into the school, and one don't get to go into the school. Or one's supported by a board member, but the other one can't. I've heard it all in the last two weeks. And so that's the only way that I can see, if we amend it, to just have a, a, a time that it can be done without it turning into something political. Cause I'm gonna be honest with you, I hate politics with everything in me. I'm about sick of it. So.
Let, let me respond to this, and I, I appreciate the remarks. Mr. Hutchins and I haven't talked since the time that we talked on the phone about this, but what I'm gonna say is pretty much echoing what you just said. This, this whole issue to me got blown out of proportion a little bit. And it all started with the fact that I understood this meeting that Mr. Hutchins was gonna have was basically an official board meeting in that he was unable to attend the other walkthrough. And so that's the whole key to what I was trying to say, official board meeting. That according to the policy, the perception could be, if I am there as a board member on, at a board function, if I had a candidate with me, does that give the appearance that the board of education is endorsing this particular candidate? And that's the only thing that I was addressing that I had some concern about. What you have outlined, Mr. Hutchins, is primarily what the Precy County policy is. And I, and I, and I have made copies of that and modified it a little bit and sent that over earlier today. So I agree, there needs to be a policy, uh, addressing this, and that's what Precy does. Every candidate for that particular office, regardless of party affiliation or whatever, they're all invited. And there has to be like two weeks' notice prior so everybody can be there. So I, so I agree. I'll, and, and if it's, you know, a function away from the school, not any way, not any way, uh, connected with the school, then it, you know, it really doesn't matter. It's just official board or school events that matter. So I, I, I would be more than happy to work with the board in drafting some modifications to this to, to clear this up so that we, no one else, I, I, the last thing I wanna do is embarrass anybody on the board or embarrass the board itself or anything like that. Uh, I told Mr. Hutchins, my, my role is, is, is to treat everybody fairly and adequately, and I think that's what I've tried to do all of my years. And so I will continue to do that. So I, I thank you for bringing that up. I think that's a, a step in the right direction.
I think we had exactly the same thing two years ago when we were going through it. Gotta be careful how you, don't visit this one, go visit this one, don't do this. And I think we need to clear all that up just by making it, this is the way it's going to happen, and no one after that can say it's unfair.
Right. Well, I, I'll be honest with you, I was lost. And then you had sent that email out and, and was talking about those policies. I, those policies didn't have a thing really to do with it. I didn't think.
That's why, that's why I suggested maybe we change the policy so that it does incorporate.
I don't think you addressed it correctly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's more a matter of opinion, basically. It wasn't illegal. Uh, that's, I mean, I personally have not done any endorsement. I, I just don't, that's not, I choose not to do that.
Now, like I said, when I started, when I, when I made that phone call to him, it was to try to rectify a situation that appeared to be wrong. So let's, how do I fix this and get it over? And I think if it went along, it kind of, it would have been a, nobody would've ever heard it, but it would've been okay. But now I think, I, I really think we need to address this in that, that if not, we're gonna have the same thing two years from now. And whoever's running or decides to run against me, if they, if they wanna do that, I would hope that they would have access to see what it is they propose they're gonna jump into.
It was what, the whole deal with, with what Mr. Lassiter said at the meeting about they were told at a principal's meeting to not, to call the county office, was that, was that true?
No.
What was, set the record straight. What was told at a principal's meeting?
I, I've had probably two or three principals reach out about, uh, school board candidates showing up at their, their schools, wanting to meet with faculty, wanting to be toured around. How do I handle this? And so I gave the principals the policy. I also gave them advice on how to handle that. Certainly, if, uh, what I told them, uh, you would treat them like any other visitor in your school. Any other visitor. If they want an appointment, or if they want to meet with you, obviously you gotta look at what you're doing in the context of the day. Uh, and what I've, I called Mr. Lassiter just the other day and said, if, if you wanna meet with principals, I think that's great. But probably the best way for you to do that is call them ahead of time and make an appointment so they know you're coming. On any given day from eight to three o'clock, there's, there's a million things that might be happening. I, I gave principals, uh, basically the policy and advice on how to handle this, and I did advise the principals, if, if. And I did advise the principals, if any candidate for the board comes to your school, certainly I would love to sit down with them and talk to them and meet with them and encourage them to come by and contact me. But there's no, you don't have to contact the superintendent to get permission to visit with a school. That's not accurate. I want all people to feel welcome in our schools. I just know in this world and literally today, we were putting out a fire at a school and then trying to figure out lunch and then trying to get kids back in the building. It's just, you know, any given day, it could be any given issue that principals are dealing with. I think there are, there have been occasions where candidates have entered the buildings and they passed out cards to staff and then people see that as what? As campaign. And then that's what we're trying to avoid and my principals are hyper-focused on not allowing that to happen because that's against board policy. And my principals want to do what's right. They want to follow the rules and they want to follow the policies and they want their staff to follow the policies. And, you know, we're kind of caught in the middle. And so I was simply giving them advice on how to handle a situation if it presented itself.
But you didn't tell them, if somebody comes to your school wanting to meet the principal, tell them I got a call to make an appointment through the county office.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
He believes that that's what was said, that's what it stated to him, Mr. Quiddick.
Well, and I, you know, other people have talked about it. But, you know, I meant totally, school is not a place to politic. But I believe anybody in the county has the right to go to a school and say, I'd like to make an appointment with the principal. Everybody has that right as a public institution. And now I do not think that they should ever be able to walk in and say, hey, I'm running for school board, come walk me around and stop what you're doing.
Well, we even have a tab on our website that says tour our school. And so any parent, anybody can fill that out. And it's basically an appointment card that helps the principal know when they're coming. And in fact, we're getting ready to invite parents to come in and tour our schools with our principals on a given day at a specific time. I mean, you know, every family would have a specific time. So.
That could be alleviated, just those couple that he had had the issue with, just maybe reiterate that to their principals.
You know, I think if somebody wants to go in the school, they should call the principal and I think that principal should know who that person is. You know, with safety issues and things like that.
Yeah.
But I still think they should be able to, and I agree with the policy saying, but I think if somebody wants to go, they should call the principal and that principal should know something about that person.
Does the board want to be there to work on a draft policy to modify some of this?
I'll be good with that. And there was something on your counter about a policy committee. Are we still doing committees?
No.
Because I didn't think so. Because I still want to have input from the staff, just like we did the policy committees before. But I thought that they would come to this if we were doing new policies.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
I think that was an external meeting. It wasn't a Surrey County Schools meeting.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. That's the chamber, that's the chamber again.
I don't care about the chamber.
I'm on the public policy committee there.
Before we go any further, Mr. Johnson, real quick, can I ask, because a lot of this over the last couple of weeks has been addressed at me. I want to make sure that I get some facts out there. And I need, on the first one, to make sure that I'm correct in what I say. One of the reasons I didn't respond to your email is because we're bordering on public meetings and open meetings. If one of us sends an email to the whole group and we all respond, that can be construed and has been construed by legal experts at an open meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Well, some people have made the argument that if you've got all your board members responding to an email, is that an official meeting?
So there is no official word, okay.
There is no official word on that, but a lot of people make that, newspapers make that argument more than anybody else.
Well, and you know, we've all heard it. If we're discussing things by email or in closed session, we've already made our decision. We're not gonna bring it out in the public. So that's why I didn't respond to it, Tony. I'm not trying to.
Well, I don't think, I don't respond to it, but I've been sent in the information. I didn't think I could do about it.
That's what I was.
Travis sends me emails a lot of times about, I don't ask for this, this information.
Now, most of the time if I see an email, I try to put back, I approve or let me know when you get done, keep me updated, something like that, so that, so that is, to me, it's the courteous thing to let me know that at least you've got it. And with that one, I, well, with several of them over the past couple of weeks, I felt like nobody got it and nobody paid any attention, even down to the math, like, you know, the first thing I said was, can we put that on the next? And it's like, it's not there. And I'm like, wow, I don't understand.
See, definitely. So that was, that's why I want to address that. The second one, I think, when I ran four years ago, I was teaching at North Surrey High School. I did not walk around North Surrey High School and ask people to vote for me. I didn't walk around the meeting. I knew better. I didn't go around to other schools and do it. So I think a policy is going to definitely help. And I think, I will just say it this way, I asked Mr. Lassiter after that meeting, as he walked away from me, he was back to me, if you'll hang out after this meeting, I'd like to talk to you and Dr. Reese about how we can fix this, and he left. So he wasn't there at the end of the meeting to talk about it. So we've all. And then I'll say the third thing, three principals have reached out to me and three or four staff members have said in the schools that he was able to go into, he was passing out his cards saying my name and I'm ready for school board member. That's campaigning. So no matter what we say, I mean, we've just got to make sure that if he wants to tour the school, any candidate, I think should be able to do that. But they shouldn't be able to knock on the teacher's door and say, you know, you see what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure we're all under the same, because all we're gonna do is destruct the school, no matter if it's me or somebody else. Now, right now, when we five go into a school, we're official board business. And I know if you've been with me, you've not seen me say, need your support when I'm running for school board again. I don't ask that. That's not the place to do it. I was told if I go to the school system or I go to church, take those signs off the side of my truck and I do. But that's not what they want. So I just want to make sure I got the facts out there that I have not asked or told or any insinuated. Please don't let any other candidate into the schools. No, no, no.
And I can see the gray area where it could be misconstrued that Nick Walker and Mr. Lassiter was with you. You know, I can see, I can see what that would look like, Tony, his endorsing.
And totally agree.
You know, I can see that. I'm just saying, from the policies that were sent to me, it was more of Mr. Johnson's opinion versus than his legal advice and they didn't address the situation. In that instance, I would have rather we just had a quick Zoom call or an email to poll the board what we thought about it than the way it was had. That's my opinion.
Okay. And we, what'd you say, all hearts free and clear?
Move.
All right, policy, or a policy on naming facilities? What I have down next, or our policy hand, or I guess our preferences on it? It's you, Mr. Clark. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, facility naming.
You named the facility.
Oh, yeah, I named the gym, I think you mentioned it, Bobby Atkins, and I think I'm, you know, I've spoken about this a lot. I've spoken to several people and talked to a former principal, talked to a principal third male and some other people. They all said that if they was voting, they would vote for it. And so I think it's, I think the person deserves it and I think that anytime you can, you know, recognize somebody, he has passed away because he's got a family. And I would hope that the board would love to do that, change the name of the gym to the Bobby Atkins Gym.
I have Gentry Mills School, just to make sure whoever's watching.
And I think I mentioned this also, you know, there's a couple people. There was one, my son always said, you know, about a couple of teachers that, you know, it's got a record. And one of them, Miss Hunter, in softball and.
But they had requests.
They had requests, and the lady that bought the ball.
Oh.
Crawford.
Crawford. I think Hunter was sold.
Now, you still late when you turn around.
Please hold my face on the screen.
I concur. I think it's in, it's in your all's district and I'm fine with it personally.
And I played for the man at Gentry back in eighth grade. He's a legend. And I think one of the things we, as we look at the policy and before we make these decisions, because these are, these are big decisions. There's so many facilities and there's a lot of good teachers out there. One of the things we've got to consider is longevity at a school. And he was there for thirty-some years.
I think mostly his entire career. And Miss Crawford, you know, they would, you know, you can always name the floor, you know, Miss Crawford, if someone, if they requested it or if the board wanted to do it, or the softball field for Miss something.
So what would be your preference? Would you like us to take that up today, put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, I'd like, you know, to approve it as soon as we can get it into work. I certainly like to see it done before I go off the board.
Just for the, for Bobby.
For Bobby.
You'll make the motion, I'll second.
If I make the motion, it would change the gym, the name of the gym to Bobby Atkins Gym, or not change it, but make the gym Bobby Atkins Gym.
And I will second.
Okay, the only concern I would have here is we've got it on, we don't have that topic on the agenda for discussion. So the public didn't know we were gonna talk. All we've got on there is naming facilities. We didn't have naming the gym at Gentry Mills School, Bobby Atkins Gym. And it's under discussion, not action, or it says pending action. So that would be my only consideration. If we're gonna be transparent, should we have announced that on the agenda? So I want you to consider that.
You get it for two weeks?
We do it, anyway, add it on there as an agenda. That would take care of that problem. Okay, so would you like to withdraw your motion then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. That's the only concern. We're trying to be as transparent as we can. We don't want to try to get something pushed through and then parents come back later and say, wait a minute, I didn't know about that.
I don't want to withdraw my say.
Well, then you make the motion. All right, so we're good on that?
Yeah, we will add that under the, we'll put that as an action item on the march, part of the business meeting.
And there's really nothing, what we just talked about, that will conflict with our policy. It looks like everything is, okay.
You're well within your policy. You want to take it forward?
Yeah, it's our policy, I think. Five minutes.
Sure, please.
Yeah, thank you. Be back in five minutes, let's say seven minutes, be back in ten after. Remember that we got two more hours of this, at least two more hours of this. And we got basketball to get to.
Scott, just hang out.
Yeah, they're right there. If everybody's okay, we're gonna go to another shop and talk about the mountain park driveway boxes, the blessing box and the book box.
Take that chair and put it right in the splash pop. I think we should move them all down to two point one four.
Talk about tomorrow morning sometime.
Make him hang out here a while.
I'd love to.
Be easy on my favorite one. Tell us what you want to do, Mr. Scott.
So I've challenged the student council slash safe promise club with, we'll some outreach stuff and they came up with the idea of putting a blessing box on kind of one end of the school and a book box on the other end of the school. So we've talked to Surrey Central and the shop, teacher's gonna be willing to build us for us. We're paying for his material and everything, but of course, wanted to make you aware and seek your permission to put those two things up on either end of our driveway, kind of. I walked around today looking for where I think it might be best.
And I was gonna talk to him about that.
But I think maybe even a little bit closer to the school instead of so far out on the lanes would be good. Our plan is to have a part of the student council every week to go, at least the food, refill the food box at least weekly. And we're hoping that some people in the community, you know, will kick into that, to that thing.
That was gonna be my question. Do you have an idea of a plan? Because most of the time, local churches or groups like that would help the schools do this. Is that what you're thinking?
I think they would be willing to, but we have a, the funds, our family assistance fund is in a good place right now. And I feel confident that we can, if we have to do it alone, we can do that.
I think your community over there will keep it busting at the seams.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Sure, will the boxes be set, cameras?
No, I'm, are you talking about cameras on the boxes?
Yeah, I mean, at least in camera view. That way you don't have somebody over there taking everything.
Well, we talked about that actually and I, I mean, I put them wherever I'm told to put them. I was thinking it kind of about a tennis court and kind of about where the playground is, which is out of camera view. But I mean, we can move them tighter if that's what.
Comfortable with that?
I am. I just. But I also understand you, we talked, like I said, we considered that, we talked about that.
I leave that decision to you. That's, I mean, that's your choice.
We could see a little bit of what's going on, but.
Well, I can give you my personal experience with it. At our church, we have individuals that will, five minutes after it's filled up, they will empty it. And we found the stuff that we had in it at local flea markets. So I think that's why, but then I've been reminded by my church, it's the thought that we're taking care of Christians, taking care of people and we shouldn't worry about what to do with it. But that's a definite concern that we have. Because we're going to the flea market sometimes and buying back the food that we already put in our own blessing box and then come back and get it again. So that's, that's the only concern I would have.
I would still leave that decision to you.
Yeah, it's your.
But I'll second his motion.
Motion by Mr. Blood, so I second by Mr. Hutchins to approve the motion to install a book box on one end and a blessing box on the other of your driveways, wherever you choose to put it, working with, making it private facilities. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? There you go. Maybe the only time you get to go in front of office.
Thank you.
Any kind of.
Thank you for moving me.
I did hear a on the nose, so I guess that's it. Okay, now we're back to sediment erosion permit approval. Mr. John, are you gonna do that one?
I can lean into it. Some board members, we were contacted by Geo Services, they want to begin the permitting process. I didn't want to give them permission to begin the permitting process without your authorization. This letter basically gives them the authorization to pursue the required plan approvals on erosion settlement control for those three turf fields. It also basically says that if they, once, if contracts are approved, then they would have, you know, they'll be approved to perform the needed construction. But that's, doesn't, what this, doesn't say that. It says if they are approved. And so we're not asking for their approval tonight. We're just asking for you to authorize them to begin public permits on.
Because it says will be approved. It says if will be approved.
Mr. Johnson has written this document.
Any concerns? So basically what it does is it gives them a jump on getting a permit started before we agree the contract. And they've agreed to do that with whatever risk that may be for them.
With the permitting, what we've learned, different areas permit differently. Municipality sometimes can be very difficult to get permits for. We don't anticipate that for our three projects. However, trying to get a jump start on this, they're trying to get a jump start on permitting. So we're just trying to comply.
And we're gonna need every day we can get to be able to be in by football season.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna need to be working with Dener on erosion control. They're gonna be working, need to work with the town of Pilot Mountain, probably on a zoning permit. So there are several, several different ones. Division of Water Quality, they'll probably have to get some permits from them. So if we could get a jump on it, that would, that would help.
And they're willing to have all this cost to do this without signing the contract.
So can someone answer me a question? I just haven't moved on and I tried because it did not add enough to my head. How are we bypassing the three bid? How are we not doing that? Like if it, because it's over half a billion dollars, it's a. Like if it, because it's over half a billion dollars, it's a, it's a formal bid, right?
Three bid.
Is that correct? I mean, it's over, it's five, five million and one cent, or ha, five hundred thousand and one cent. Then it has to be a formal bid, even if it's going to the newspaper, so forth and so on. How do we bypass and go on with this without?
That's, that's Mr. Johnson.
Well, in the email that he sent the board on the RFQ process, we used a request for qualifications. This is a specialized project. We had three, we had five companies that submitted proposals. Uh, the three school systems met with those, met with three of the top, the three top companies. Uh, we listened to their proposals and through that process, we've now, now are in the negotiation project, process of finalizing those contracts. It's a different way to procure the, the project. Not that you're trying to avert the bidding process, but this is a very specialized project. You're essentially getting three custom fields and that's, uh, that's the process that, uh, that we've used. And many of these cases like this, uh, that's the process that's been used across the state.
You know, one of the big questions I had in that, in, in that email that I sent back after Mr. Johnson said that was, how do we, how do we know we're getting eleven to twenty-four? Because that was the number. How do we know we're getting eleven to twenty-four if we don't have one bid? So I don't know that, you know, and one of my big things is I can remember companies, and I try not to do this, but I know companies that say, you can get a twenty-five percent discount if you act by this date. And then they bump the price up twenty-seven percent so that they take the twenty-five percent off and they end up making a hundred and two percent. So, you know, you understand what I'm saying. How do we know we're getting eleven to twenty-four?
Well, I can, I, I know Stokes County Schools has recently put in two tracks that cost almost nine hundred thousand dollars apiece per school. And the price quote we've been given on our tracks is, is not quite half of that. So we are getting about a three hundred thousand dollar cost savings on the tracks that's been quoted to us. And I think it's probably the same kind of material, urethane, uh, urethane, uh, coat. We're not one hundred percent sure, but we think that's the case and stuff.
On the permitting, is this just for the turf fields that they're doing?
I'm sure they're getting permits on, on the entire project.
Because we haven't agreed if we're doing tracks or not, because we don't, I mean, we don't have money to do all.
And in most, and two of the three cases, the track and the football field in the same place, it would be a site permit. I guess, and they would do a permit of whole area.
They would permit the entire area. Then it shows that you're working within that boundary.
So are they doing soil samples and bore drillings?
They've done, completed that.
That tracks as well?
Yes, that was part of their initial scope.
Part of the geotechnical, uh, survey.
And back to the original question, we, I sat in on those three proposals, Jack and Wilks and us. And I think the, the difficulty with bidding this is every one of them has such a different type of product. You know, how do you tell them, y'all been on the same one, but they've got different types of products? So you had to sit down and say, what do you think's the best product, with the best price, with the best schedule and, and the best management and meet the timeline? So there was a lot that went into it. And they all told us pretty much the same, the eleven to twenty-four percent would be the difference.
So you all, along with other two school systems, are the ones that chose Geo Services?
They were the most qualified candidate, we felt. And Robert and Dr. Reeves and I went and listened to the proposal.
As well as Wilks and Jack.
Yes, and Jack. They all, everybody had a board member, the superintendent and staffs. Yeah, facilities there. So the, I mean, the, um, the erosion control permit and settlement, they're doing it on their own as far as being able to get prepared, because they told us around March first is when they really wanted to, to get going heavy on it, so we're almost there.
So have they, did they damage the tracks any by doing this? By doing their sampling?
They took core samples. They had to make a, they had to drill a hole, didn't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Did they repair it back when they were done? Or did they?
We all have to, I mean, if, if we chose not to do something on the track, then we'll need to repair that.
Okay. But if they, when they do the track?
But if we decide to do the track, then, you know, there's no need to worry about it.
Right, they're going to have to, yeah, okay, I get it.
Where do we decide that? Because we need to, that needs to be decided pretty quick, right?
Yes, sir, I got numbers today. I wish I was prepared to share them with you, but I'm not.
Okay.
So, um, I think we're going to be pretty close to what I shared with you previously. I think our asphalt, uh, I think they told us the asphalt numbers came in higher than what they thought.
And they were still negotiating.
The asphalt material came in higher, and I think they are looking at our local asphalt companies. Robert asked that question. Mr. Hutchins was able to sit in about half of the phone call this morning, uh, when they were giving us prices. Uh, they have built in contingencies in two of the three projects. Uh, one of the projects, they didn't feel like a contingency was needed because it was the best soil out of all nine fields. So, um, there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar contingency built into two of the three high school fields. Um, so I, I, I really think I need some time to put all this in a spreadsheet and bring that back to you and give you options, and I can share that with you. Uh, if you'll give me another twenty-four hours and we could potentially have another special call meeting later this week, uh, so that you could either take, you can take action on that. I do think time is of the essence and we need to, uh, we need to get that ball rolling as quickly as possible. They will use a standard AIA contract, which is, uh, contracts Mr. Johnson uses, um, with, with all our other major construction bids.
But to answer your question, this has to be considered together because they're processing, they can do it together.
Right.
And the process is they fill the, the football field and then when they're double dip, then they do the track around it. So they don't mess up the track going to the football field. So, yeah, it does need to be made pretty quick. So can we get a motion to approve or is, is that not your prefer, or your, um, preference for a settlement erosion permit approval for them to move forward as long as this letter does not state that they are, they are getting the bid? Because we don't know, we're getting the project.
I'd be okay with it as long as it says.
You're taking the wheel out, is what you're saying. Well, Mr. Johnson has approved the, because it says they will be approved for approval on the need. It should say if they are approved, right?
Well, it says upon approval of the contracts for construction.
Okay, at the very end of that.
Upon.
Upon approval. So they're not saying they will be approved. Mr. Johnson's comfortable with that?
Oh, good, I see.
He, he wrote it.
Oh, he wrote it, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I follow that, because regardless, we got to have the, it's got to be done.
And they're doing it for, in their own risk.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a motion then?
Sure.
Okay, good. Motion by Mr. Bledsoe. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any of both no?
Rush, what are we looking at? I'm not holding it to exact numbers.
I think we're really close to what I shared earlier. Uh, I just got to go back to these, these asphalt numbers. We, we have three options on tracks.
Well, that's great.
Really, you have, you got two options. You've got the current, well, you do have three options. Asphalt, no top. Asphalt with a latex top.
Which is what we have now.
Which is what you have. And then asphalt with a urethane top. And then you can do asphalt with a mondo top. And mondo is the, the premium.
Correct, yes.
Um, I would like to look at a urethane option for one of our high schools. Um, the asphalt option could be an option for the other two. We can do latex possibly as an option for the other two, but I, I just got to look at the numbers, uh, and really have some time to crush these in a spreadsheet.
Do you stay in the three point seven five?
I think we're close to that. Yeah, I think we're close. Uh, we, I don't think you can get all three tracks. You, you know, that's.
With the third option.
Yeah, I think based on what I, I kind of sketched out for you, I think you're going to be, uh, you know, maybe, maybe we can get one track, uh, with three point seven five plus the fields. Um, and then, you know, it's going to be up to the board to decide whether we look at other options or not.
Is that the seven lane or should?
Hands on the side.
Yeah.
Suri Central's seven. North is six, east is five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I really just need some time to be able to lay all those options out for you so you could see at this school what we're going to do. I want to show you all the ancillary items that we're looking at, especially at one, at North Suri, because, uh, there's a concrete ADA sidewalk that's considerably, that's adding to the price more than the other two because they, they don't have that. I mean, which is, every, every site's just a little different. So I really want to be able to sit down and show those, put them on, on a big screen. Uh, maybe, maybe we could have a special call meeting later this week. We, we've got the data, we just need to take time to process it.
And we can make the best decision.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to share that with you. Um, but we just need time to put it together in a spreadsheet so you can understand it and then come together in a meeting and decide what we want to do.
Okay, that sounded good, everybody? Okay. School safety vestibule.
Board members, I asked Robert to, uh, to take a look at this. Obviously, this was one of the items you, you listed in the safety grant as being, uh, I won't say a priority, but certainly a concern. And, and I'll, I'll just lay it out like this. If you take, uh, Pilot Elementary, Rockford Elementary, Pilot Middle School, Dobson Franklin, Mount Park, when you walk in the building, you, you don't walk into the hallway or into the cafeteria or into a lobby. You walk into the office. And obviously, that creates a secondary layer of safety for our students, our teachers, our school. In other schools like Copeland, Flat Rock, uh, and about eleven of our schools, Gentry, Metta View, Central Middle, you're walking into an open area and open hallway. At North Suri, East Suri, Suri Central, this big open area, and at East Suri, North Suri, almost into the cafeteria. So one thing that Robert and I saw at another high school in Guilford while we were visiting, looking at their turf, is, is really a safety vestibule. Created it in an old school, but we, we kind of got some ideas. And I know that's something we've talked about. So what we're going to do today is kind of bring an idea to you and see, see how you feel about it as far as moving forward. So Robert, you want to take it from here?
So as he said, we had previously talked about, uh, the addition of safety vestibules. So what I wanted to do was come to the board and request, um, permission to move forward with that. Um, we, we've got twelve schools currently that do not have a safety vestibule. Uh, we've got six elementary schools that do not. And then I feel five of those could very easily be, um, changed to have a safety vestibule. Um, but my concern is we would need, uh, the assistance of an architect for this to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance with the current building code, uh, safety, um, and all of that. So I, I wanted to just get the board's feelings on, on the use of an architect. Do we want to, um, use one that we've had on previous projects? Do we want to look at, um, putting out an RFQ or RFP or whatever for a, a different architect? I just wanted to get you guys' feelings on that and see what you thought.
What do you think?
I think a larger architect, a project of this scale would probably be pushed back on their priority list. Um, I think if we could find a local, smaller firm, that they would probably give us more attention at a quicker timeline. Um, I could be wrong, but that's just my opinion.
Is there somebody local that you've worked with that you would?
I really don't have, I don't have anyone.
Okay.
So like a construction company like Korm, that wouldn't be satisfactory, just like them come in and look at it and get their opinion?
I think they're going to ask you how you, how you want, how you want to design.
Yeah.
And I found out this week, Korm didn't have an in-house engineer anymore, so.
You're going to need, you're going to need to build, to build, uh, some masonry walls. You're going to need to cut in some doorways. Um, you're going to need to add some, uh, curtain walls and things, things like that. So in my opinion, I just feel like we would be better off to go through an architect who knows those egress issues and, and those type things. And let them do the design and everything to, to save us, you know, from not being in compliance or future liability to the, to the district.
This may be an ignorant question, and excuse me if it is, but are there any type of architectural classes at Suri Community or at any of the other local community colleges? Or we can maybe do some type of partnership since this is a smaller project versus a new school for something like that? Is that, and if it's not even feasible?
I'm not aware of any.
And Suri doesn't actually have in construction classes but not architectural.
I mean, you'd like to have someone that has a seal.
Yes.
Well, I understand, but the, the, the teacher, probably.
Maybe. If it're a four-year school, it may, but I don't know about.
I don't know anything at the college level, Suri Community or anything like that.
I don't think Wilks even has a construction program.
Right. Besides, I, I just didn't know that was a. Told you it might be ignorant. I couldn't bear to warn you.
I may relate to that.
You're, you're doing storefronts, correct?
Part, part of it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there would probably need to be some masonry work done. Um, there would need to be some, uh, walls, concrete block and brick walls penetrated and a new doorway added.
Yes.
Uh, so it, it's been kind of like Dobson Elementary when we did it. We cut in a new doorway and forced them to go in to the office and added a, a glass storefront, you know, with doors.
If you'll give me your number, I'll get somebody in touch with you in the morning. But you could probably answer that question, is the house got to be laid out or whatever? I think I, we deal with.
Because each school is going to be unique. You know, we've got three that'll be identical, of course, you know, when you talk about Shoals, Westfield, and Cedar Ridge, you know, they're all prototype floor plans. So whenever you do it one, you're going to be able to do it the other two. But then you get into the others, each one's going to have its own unique challenge, I guess.
Got you.
And I just think it would be good to have an architect do the design work.
So you need two things from us, right? Do we want to proceed with it, move forward? Number two, how would you like us to have you move forward? Do we want to bid it or do a request for a proposal, or a request for qualifications and let them give you their information to start the design?
That is my question, yes.
Okay. That sounds reasonable, Lee. All right, motion by Mr. Hutchins, if we approve the request. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've had that done, some of that done recently. So I'd be able to get you in touch with a couple of people.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so we got the motion.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. Uh, any other questions? I think it's a good thing, and this, to me, is something we can do fairly quickly, fairly inexpensively and provide, and increase security. I like it.
I think I'm thinking about it, the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're calling funding, how about that?
So we have, uh, a new funding source called Repair Renovation. And this is for expansion improvements to classroom renovation, classroom facilities, and will also pay design fees. So we currently have six hundred ninety-four thousand dollars in this pot.
And that's from the state?
From the state lottery funds. I think this is an excellent use of the R and R funds. Every county is getting these funds, and so this is a reoccurring pot of money. Um, I believe the county totals around five hundred thousand a year, but since there's two city districts, we don't get five hundred a year, we're going to get less than that. So this is basically a year and a half. We've not spent any of these monies, uh, in the past. This is a brand new funding source that we've never had before. Uh, we cannot use the money on athletics and we cannot use the money on parking lots. I know that much. Audra has double-checked that. But we can use it for this, uh, and I think it would be an excellent use of the money, especially since they're paying the salaries.
Yeah, that much money, that six million, that doesn't sound like enough to think of.
Well, it might not be enough to do all of them, but it would be enough to go ahead and get the design taken care of and get started. And what, what you, what you can get, we'll bid them out. And what you can get in this year, we'll go ahead and schedule it. And then we'll do the next and next year with the reoccurring funds. Because this, this money will, we'll get another allocation of funds, uh, probably in next fiscal year.
And that is, that's separate from our other lottery funds? And that is, that's separate from our other lottery funds?
Yes.
That's a completely different pot of money.
Yes.
It's July? July we'll bid it?
I'm assuming we'll get another allocation in July.
Based on the state, but it was how that comes.
And you gotta, and you gotta remember that three of our middle schools are gonna be very challenging to get a, any type of safety vestibule just by, by the way they were designed and built. Central Middle, Metaview, Gentry, so-so. But those where you have to come in, and you come into a lobby and you, you know, your office area is straight across from you. So, those are gonna be challenging, to say the least.
What would you do there? More like move offices up front?
That's where I feel like we, we need the benefit of an architect to help us with that, you know, to, to, for them to bring options to us and say, okay, here's some ideas we could do, and we can choose. And Dr. Reeves is right, you know, if we can't do them all, we can at least get started on them and complete these five that were gonna be pretty, pretty simple. I compare it to Dobson Elementary, because the way they're built and designed, it's a lot like that. A little bit of masonry work, storefront, cut a door in, boom, you're done, you know?
You're talking about Cedar Ridge, man?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because you could do that from outside.
And if there's money like, you know, that's a safety thing, there's some part of money, some work of safety that could be used.
Well, we did, we, we applied for it. We got $150,000, we got about $400,000. Yeah, it was on our list, but it's, we just don't have enough to do it.
Is this a two-year accumulated fund? The first year, I think the first year was prorated, Mr. Whitaker. We didn't get the full amount. But again, each county's getting $500,000, so I think our amount may be more like $400 and some thousand.
And then our helping gets part of that $500?
Yes, sir.
And is that on for pupil or how do they decide how much?
I'm assuming it is on, by pupil. Yeah, I've not gotten into the weeds on the, the allocation formula and how much they're getting versus us. I do think it's a wise use of the funds, and I think it's something that, again, we, we're gonna speak to the commissioners on February 28th. Here's another initiative we're taking on with lottery funds. It's something we're not bringing to you to keep things off of you that, that are important. So, I think this will be a, a very welcome addition to our schools.
Okay, we had a motion, a second, and we didn't vote. So, all of them voted right? Any votes no? Thank you.
Right quick, I do want to say, I appreciate y'all doing what you did with vans, purchasing for the high school. Talking, speaking of purchasing, buying four used vans for $90,000 versus it would've been $200,000 Metaview. So, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
They look very good, too, with logos.
If we could just keep people from backing into them. Okay, we're good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug. Look forward to getting started on it.
Yep.
Mr. Dix, thank your team for this morning.
Doug, try not to talk so much next time.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. All right, strategic plan update?
Yeah, this will go quick. So, board members, if you open that letter, this is a potential letter I'd like to email or, or mail to all of our strategic planning committee members. So, what I'm asking is if you'll go ahead and get me the name and address, or just name, I'll find the address, but name of your three folks, we'll go ahead and get this letter. Dr. Cogle couldn't work on the 28th, so the first meeting will be March 14th. We're gonna begin at 6 o'clock with dinner served, and we'll go to 8:00 PM. Dove and Sherry are working on locations. Is that right, Dove?
That's correct, yes.
So, we'll list those locations once they're finalized. But this is the letter. I just need the names of your three folks, and we'll go ahead and get this pushed out.
If we can only get one or two, I'm gonna be so picky I'm gonna get one.
Sure.
Yeah.
Nope.
I got an extra.
You got an extra?
I got an extra.
So, we're near about the end of the week?
Yeah, that'd be great, if I could have my meeting in order.
I wanna confirm on behind.
Yeah, okay.
So, I speak for him.
All right. And I don't know that we'll need this, this, the meeting on June 13th, so we may be able to get this done in five meetings, but it's there in case. So.
Locations have not been determined yet.
We're, Dove's working on that.
I emailed Sherry today. I'm waiting to hear back from her.
You thinking about one location for all, moving around?
Probably gonna move it around. I think we'd do it, do it at schools, and I'd probably rather spread that versus.
For somebody pilot, doesn't it?
Surrey Central, Central, and Dobson.
It's a somebody pilot. If somebody pilot, they'd have to drive Cedar Ridge every day.
How many names is it gonna be? Five?
I don't see, five or six. Five or six.
If you ask somebody, I don't even know.
Yep. And there's the dates on that.
And she can't leave till after it's done.
The dates are on that letter. Don't you see the letter?
I see the letter.
Yeah, the dates are on that letter. Okay, good. All right.
All right, that concludes strategic plan update.
Read to achieve. Okay, Dr. Dan and Dr. Spies, Mrs. Spies is on. They're just in that, rolling around.
Good evening, afternoon, whatever it is. I'm here to update you on third grade reading proficiency. As you know, read to achieve law, the goal is that all third graders be proficient by the end of third grade. And last year at this time, when I reported our reading proficiency to you, or our number of students who have met a pathway for reading, 35.8% of our students were proficient at this time last year. And I'm happy to report that this year at MOI, or middle of your testing, we have 44.85% of our students proficient, or who have met a pathway in third grade this time. So, we're very glad to see an increase in those numbers, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, they're already proficient for the end of third grade?
Yes, and they've already met a pathway.
To the end, get to those other 55%, or as many as you can.
Yes. So, we will have another DIBELS assessment at the end of the year. Students will also have the EOG testing, of which they can show proficiency. If they did not show proficiency in either one of those, they could retest in, for EOG. And then, of course, all of those students will be invited to summer reading camp. And we did see a high percentage of our students, about 30% of our students who attended summer reading camp last year, met a pathway by the end of summer reading camp. So, we do see some students who continue to be successful in meeting pathway during the summer.
Do we have any comparative data with the state, state level?
I, not at this time. I, I don't have any DIBELS data at this time, because some school districts in the state are still assessing, so we don't have finalized numbers. As soon as I have finalized numbers, I could share those. But right now, where we stand now, I can only tell you about DIBELS. I can't tell you about their pathways. But most of our students who are meeting a pathway, it is through DIBELS, and we're slightly above the state in most areas right now. But again, all districts have not finished those assessments at this time.
So, these would've been students that would've come into the kindergarten after, right after COVID? Would they have been in kindergarten with COVID? This is fourth year, so maybe they weren't in kindergarten there COVID. Just curious, because I'm trying to figure out, you know, where in their progress.
Yes, they would be in kindergarten.
Okay. So, they've had first, first, second, third grade to catch back up with the murder laws. Okay.
Yes.
So, they, there's 44.85% that have met at least beginning of grade test or the DIBELS eight.
DIBELS eight. And then we do have some students who have a good call exemption, and those are our students who have an IEP with a significant delay in reading, or they're multilingual students who are, whose services begin after July 1st, 2022.
Do you have a breakdown of how many of those are good cause exemptions out of 44.85%?
I, I do have that, and I should've brought that with me. I do have that number, and I can share that back. Yeah, I have it in the spreadsheet, yeah.
Well, just to clarify that, for my, my purposes, is that an exemption, so they're not counted at all, or they're included in the 44.85%?
They're included in the 44%, yes.
To me, exemption means you don't include them at all, but that's not what I mean. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. It looks like we're to teacher working condition survey. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You had to sit here all that time, Dorian.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
Thank you.
So, board members, every two years, the state of North Carolina administers teacher working condition survey. This year, that survey has changed, and Ms. Blutzow has been serving on a state committee as our principal of the year, helping them, come up here closer, Ms. Blutzow, helping them honestly just give some good feedback. So, I wanted you to hear from her, the highlights of the teacher working condition survey.
So...
You didn't remember writing cards that I did put up there?
Thank you for coming, first of all. Thank you for coming and reading to us the other day. So, we appreciate that.
Hey, kindergarten just gave me one already.
Well, I just want you to know that we rated all the readers of Mr. Whitaker. That was really something that he wanted.
He wanted so bad that they'd be...
He wanted to be the best.
My first book was Chris Anthony, so.
But the kids remembered it, and that's all that matters.
I got the floral one. Why don't you get the floral of yours?
So, y'all can come anytime you want to. I appreciate the healthy competition. So, I'm gonna be real quick and go over this with you guys. What I gave you is a copy, of course, you have that presentation in there, but what I gave you is a copy of all questions that will be asked. So, the teacher working conditions is part of Senate Bill 622. It is legislation that this gets sent out every year, bi-annually. We are, as a committee, looking at the possibility of this becoming an annual survey, so we're getting feedback every year. I'm your traditional principal representation for the state, so no pressure there for my colleagues. But what you see is that the survey was 199 questions in different formats. It's now 100 questions. The first page are optional demographics. Principals and assistant principals will not take this copy, so even though you see that on the front, it will tell them not to take it. One of the major changes for the teacher working conditions, besides going from 199 down to 100, is that there are no questions asked that pertain to the district or the state level. It is strictly a school-wide view. So, I think on my end, and on the lead, for the leadership of the principal section, it would be good for the perspective of the district to look at patterns across schools to help support principals, because this is not a divisive survey. It's not meant to be that way. It is meant just to get feedback so that we can move forward.
Was the last, the last survey, was it a school, a school?
It did, it had district and state level questions on it. And so, it does not anymore for various reasons.
It was 200 questions?
It was 199, and it was four different formats of questions.
What was the participation rate of that?
Well, so, we shot for good participation rate, and in Surrey County, I think we came close to 100%. I know that that was sort of...
And across the state?
I can't answer that today. I think it was, it was pretty high, though, because I think in the 80s, they were, we were all shooting for 100. So, this year, we are shooting for 90% participation. Mr. Vai and I were able to get the list of emails that all the teachers were going out to, so I think we'll come close to, closer to 100, because all of our principals have seen the email list. And so, another difference in this is, in the past, we headed a code, which if you're like me, that shuffles in on your desk if you don't do it immediately. So, this'll be easier, because they'll get a code, and every Friday that they haven't completed it, they'll get a reminder. The sooner they complete it, they'll go into a raffle, so to speak, for incentives. And so, there are statewide incentives, anything from Bojangles gift cards to participation at sporting events. So, that is a new statewide initiative. And so, there's been lots of, lots of raffle items for that. And that's pretty much energy to working conditions. It's March 1st, it goes out at 6:00 AM in the morning. So, we've told teachers, if you don't get it by lunchtime, that means you're not gonna get it, so you need to let your representative know. The other piece of that is from this, we are looking to create a principal and assistant principal working condition survey. That one would be more at the state and district level of a lens. That is currently in process. And so, I just found out last week that I'm gonna get the honor of working with all regions to try to get some stakeholder groups from principals and, and get some feedback on that, so we can make some questions. And it will come out in 2025. So, we'll spend this year developing it. I'm part of a North Carolina Principal of the Year network, and we are funding part of that work. So, it's about $15,000 for these surveys to be created, or a person to help create them. And so, we're funding a part of that and hope to have representation from our area. I asked Mr. Vai to consider being the HR director on our board, and so you can see in that presentation, he was, but, so we're excited to be kind of getting that off the ground. And so, that work began in November, and so right now, we, we have some representation from RISA's superintendents, and I'm looking to add some HR directors in there. And so, my goal is always to have some representation from Surrey Stokes, from our area. And so, that's it. That's my whole piece. So, do you have any questions?
Do you know when the survey results will be in?
It's pretty immediate. We should have those in mid-April. They're not, there's not gonna be a big lull on them. It opens March 1st, it closes March 31st, and so it'll be maybe even sooner than that. But they're shooting for immediate results back to districts. So, that will be good. Now, you'll have to wait probably till after the state board meeting in April, and then they'll release it, but you're looking at the second week in April of getting it out to the school level.
So, how does this differ from our teacher working satisfaction survey that we've done before? Or is it the same?
Same.
Same, it's just a different?
Yeah, so every two years, they've taken it. They just chose this year. The whole, what had happened over time was they had added lots of things to it and never taken any away, so it had just become just a huge, everything from, do you have Wi-Fi access down? And so, they just restructured it to make it cleaner. And in part of those, getting the data back, if you go from four and five different types of data you want, it's harder to get the data back out to school. So, everything is on that strongly agree to disagree, and then there are open-ended comments. I do like the last pieces that ask, like, what professional development do you need, and what access do you need? And so, I think those are great questions, because you can really get some district information of what would help our staffs.
And the goal is to have every teacher to...
I think the goal should always be 100% participation. If you really don't have a good look, but the, the state is shooting for, if you don't have 50% participation, they won't give you your data back. I don't foresee that being an issue in Surrey County at all. I think as principals, we still need to be shooting for 100% participation. Mr. Vai and I have given everybody the information to be able to make sure that your emails are going out to the right people. That was a little different for us, because in the past, our, the person who handled our surveys had a list and could give out those codes. It was anonymous, but we really knew who they were going to. So, that was the one piece that's been different for us to manage this year. But I think we, we've got it. So, we're ready to go for March the 1st.
So, there's no way that this will be completely anonymous?
It's completely anonymous, so a survey will go to Kelce York Values, Dale's daughter is an example, and it goes straight to her on March the 1st. And every Friday that she doesn't answer it, she should get a reminder, which is great, because that has been a piece in the past. We didn't know who completed or who didn't, so you'd see 70% of people, and you were just sending out generic reminders. And then the people like me, who was shoved under paper on their desk, were having to search for that little itty-bitty strip of paper with a code. So, it's gonna be good.
In our system, getting collaborations as it goes?
Yes. So, every Friday, Dr. Reeves, Holly, principals, Mr. Vai, there's a whole...
So, the principals are seeing how many of their staff?
I asked this year for principals to be included in that, so I hope that it will. But it's always gone, I think, to Dr. Reeves and Holly and Mr. Vai. But I do think it's helpful for principals just to know, kind of immediately, it takes work off these guys. So, hopefully, we'll be included, too.
And there probably will be people would say, well, why do you need a code? But if you didn't, then the data's not reliable, because one person could take it 10 times and, and affect the results.
And in that presentation, it shows you the email that everybody's gonna get. And so, all they have to make sure of is that it says, Donna Blutzow, Cedar Ridge, here's your code. So, they're making sure they take it to the right school. But the email is very, you would be hard to take it to the wrong place, the way it's laid out. laid out.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for...
Are you forgetting us back on schedule?
Yes, y'all have a good one.
Thank you, you too.
And thank you again for coming to read. Anytime. I especially liked it, y'all were going to compete against each other and dress up, like, y'all come back all the time for kids.
It sounds like we just made a hat.
That's all they remembered, was a tin hat?
I know. Well, they remembered Chris Anthony, but I'm sorry, I can't say that one either, Mr. Whitaker. Bye, y'all.
Okay. Well, I ended up with the first book being Walter the Parting Dog. So, I was, I was quite the hit.
I believe you were in my granddaughter's first grade class, and she told me about that.
They, they laughed for 15 minutes for real solid.
Yep, that's good, and they will never forget that you...
And I turned bright red.
Yep. Okay, leadership substitutes.
I just, I just wanna say this, we are now ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule, there we go. Let's don't push it, though.
Let's make sure we stay there, okay?
10 minutes, 12 minutes ahead of schedule. I have to use one of those.
Okay.
Well, just, you know, we brought it up at the last board meeting about leadership substitutes, and what I feel is that it's... Excuse me. Diet Coke wasn't the smartest thing to drink before I started to talk.
The importance, in my mind, of leadership substitutes and us getting into the classrooms to see the real world, real-world experiences that our teachers see, you know, and I'll be honest with you, since that board meeting, you know, I've been to a ton of events, basketball games, and things of that nature. I've had more people come up and, and say that they like that idea, I mean, 'cause I just feel like it's a, you know, I, we've talked about it, I'm not an educator, none of us are educators.
You're retired educator.
You know it all.
That's a lesson. Right, Mr. Vai?
So, for us to make the decisions, I think it's imperative for us to go in and not just on the table, we're doing a school visit, and we get to see the, you know, sort of like when you invited a guest over to your house and everything's cleaned up. I want to see the normal every day. I think it would give us a true appreciation of what the teachers have to do every day when we're there from first thing in the morning till time to go home, and we might have to miss lunch, because we gotta go cover a class for somebody, or we have to hold our bladder for a long time.
That's the hardest part of it.
I think it will give us a newfound appreciation for all levels, and my idea was, and we can do it however you all would want to, but my idea would be each board member go to, to different grade, or different level schools in their districts, once per academic year, an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, would be my idea.
What, to teach y'all that?
To be a substitute all day, and the board members go through the substitute process just like anyone would with Mr. Vai's substitute training, background check, because we don't have to have a background check to be on the board to make all the decisions for the school system, but our substitutes.
You'll get paid.
No pay.
No pay.
You're getting paid already. We make $187 a month, so puts you in a different tax bracket.
How long does that take once a day?
Just a couple hours.
Okay. Yeah, but I, I just think, you know, I have, I have a busy, full-time schedule with, with my career, but I can get three days per 180 days to come in and give back to my community as a substitute teacher for the day.
Well, that's just substitute all day and give that teacher a day off of pay.
That's true.
Well, you know, I've had, I've had a lot of time to think about it, and I guess my, my question is, what is, what's the intent of it, and I understand this for us to, to understand what teachers have to go through, but I also know as a teacher, as a substitute, doesn't have to do the same thing a teacher does, because a teacher's got lesson planning and making, and a substitute is, they do great, you gotta have them, but essentially, they can be an adult babysitter, and they're not doing the same things the teachers are doing.
I'll tell you what, one thing that I think that, what I'm hoping that will come out of it is us see the severe change in children since COVID and the, the lack of discipline that we've got in this county. Maybe it's not talked about a lot, but it sure is to me everywhere I go. Parents aren't disciplined at home the way they used to, and so now they're being sent to school, where we expect the teachers to be like the parents. And that's, you know, that's, that's across the county in all age groups, so I, I think it would be beneficial not only for us as a board, but for Dr. Reeves and, and Dr. Dannley and Mr. Vai, anybody within the school system that is in a leadership position that's making decisions for the schools. I don't think it could be, I think it would be better than any conference we could ever go and sit through.
Well, what I'll say about Mr. Vai and Travis and some of the others, most of them have been school teachers.
I know, a while ago.
They know what goes on. Now, it may be a different story for the board members.
Well, I'm saying, I know they've all been educators and been in the classroom, but they haven't been in the classroom after COVID. And with the way things are now in our society, I think it's completely different, I've been a teacher before or after, but it's a different world. I think that what it is, what it was then...
So, just from the school suspensions, and I was going up since COVID in our schools?
I think so.
Does anybody got any statistics on that?
I don't, break the hem, I don't.
I haven't drunk it.
No.
Jody and...
The soda, the meal with drinks, I had a, I did know.
That's just coming from different teachers all across the county. I don't have, I don't have a fact sheet laying in front of me.
And I think it depends on the level. I think elementary, you probably will see a little different story than middle, because middle, the whole lot's changed, and they go crazy.
This is from elementary to high school, that there's a huge discipline problem. And again, it's not, it's not all the school system's fault. I mean, it's society. Society's gone crazy a bit, but, and we're expecting that our educators to, not just educate, but we're expecting them to raise the kids for the parents a lot of times, and I just think that it could be no better professional development, and we're using professional development, than for us to go and sit through what we're actually having the people to do every day. And it would help our substitute issue a little bit, where we've, we've got everybody that needs substitutes.
Well, and I can tell you, it's been both, a substitute and a teacher. The kids treat you differently when you're a substitute as they do when you're a classroom teacher, because they will do everything in their power as to a substitute to get over them, knowing that, you know what, they're gone tomorrow, but if you're my classroom teacher, I'm not gonna mess with you as much, because I know you've got my educational future in your hand. So, it's, it's, that's the reason I asked you that question, because it's a little different perspective of the student. I mean, I've had them, I've had them, I leave a plan, and they sit down, and the first question, thing I tell them to do, they say, oh, we don't have to do that. So, what's the sub gonna do? The whole class period, they don't do anything, because they, and that's part of that discipline issue.
I mean, you're not gonna get 100% of the, but you're also going to get to see what the other teachers are going through there from firsthand perspective. You know what I mean? I mean, I, there's, in my mind, there's nothing negative that could come from us being a value of the classroom.
And I'll, I'll tell you the reason I ask, that what I can see is very beneficial, and it's gonna change the dynamic a little bit, the shadowing a teacher for a whole day. You go into the classroom with a teacher and just sit and watch.
Yep.
Now, let's think about...
I'd be okay with that.
Let's think about the real world. You know, the principal's gonna pick, who are they gonna pick? Probably the best, well-behaved classroom they got, so, and that's nothing wrong with it. They wanna make their school look good. I got that. So, we just gotta understand it. I've got no problem with doing it. I'd like to get back in the classroom. I miss teaching. I just don't wanna do it every day anymore.
I don't get a sense of, when we go on our school visits, that anything's staged or anything's different from the ordinary. I, I, I mean, I don't get that sense.
Well, it's hard to do it for the whole school, because we get...
Yeah, people know that all the places, for one. And secondly, you know, we're, we're catching them right in the middle of their, their teaching, and lots have got going on that day, and, and for the most part, we're not interrupting them, and they're just carrying on. So, I, I feel very comfortable with the present education program. I know when I retired, I came here to Central Waldorf and some got an application to sub, and I called my daughter, and I said, what do you think about this? She'd been, she taught at South County Schools, and she said, well, have you seen the episode of King of Queens, where Canada's a substitute? And I, I pulled it up on YouTube, and I laid that, watched it, and I laid that application at the side. She'll maybe be the best drawer, so.
Good point.
Yeah. But, yeah, I just, I've seen every trick in the book, you know, they'll talk this. Now, but when you had a licensed teacher that goes in and that subs, different story, because they know better, they say, no.
I think that's the best-case scenario when you need a sub, and I understand where the kids are coming from, but it's more to help us than maybe them.
Yeah, it is.
And see what's going on, what teachers put up with, and everything, but...
The best-case scenario is you got a ex-teacher, a retired teacher, substitute.
How easy is that? And we have a lot, I'm just loving it. I know Pete Davis, he's talking about it all the time, how much he enjoys going into school and substitutes. I said, well, Pete, you gotta make enough extra money so you can play golf every day.
But, you know, think about it, you know, go and put cameras in the buses. Parents would say, no, 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 my, my child would never do that. Let me show you. Pull up the video, show it to them, and then just sort of sink it down in the chair. Yeah, I guess he did, didn't he? So, it does give us perspective, I think, of what's really going on.
And I, I would be okay with a shadowing a teacher for a day.
I was gonna say, I think, I think that is a little less scary than, than taking one in, taking over the class after all these years. But it's, Mr. Vai, you HR, right?
Yes, sir.
So, what are the negatives?
Go ahead.
Go ahead with that question, so.
You know, I don't know if there's, there's negatives to anybody wanting to come in to, to help. I think, I think people wanna, will need to want to do that. I think that's where, you know, and all the people that we, and sometimes during the training, some people don't follow back up, and they kind of realize that this may be something I don't wanna do, and I'm glad they do that before they step into a classroom and, and work with, but I think the folks that stick through it and go through the training and follow through and become, they truly want to get back and wanna be a part to help out, so. Anybody that wants to do that, I'm all supportive of them coming in and helping us out. Probably didn't answer the question.
Well, I'm, I'm open to either one of them, even because I've, I've done substitute in the past, so I'm open to either one of them. I tend to wanna do the shadowing a little bit more, but I'm open to it.
Well, and it may be better for us, legal-wise, if, if we have, if we're a shadowy teacher versus, you know, we're not there as a board member. Now, that being known right up front, we're not there as board members. We're there as a substitute teacher, just like John does.
I don't know that it would be seen that way.
No, you don't think so, do you?
We can say it all day, but, yeah.
One of the concerns that I got from a parent, no, a teacher, was that we would walk into the classroom and immediately scrutinize the way they did it, as if it wasn't good enough, they didn't leave us a good enough lesson plan, because no matter what, we are a board member, and when we walk in, it's different. It's a, it's a different look, it's sort of like the reason we walk in, we don't walk up to the front of the school and say, hey, I'm coming in. We don't do that, because it kind of throws people off a little bit, so I guess we'd have to have some kind of ground rules. That's why I kind of like the shadowing thing a little bit more, just because that way, I'm seeing what's, I can see what's going on. I'd almost rather they give me a list of classes, show me what's there that day, let me pick the class. I go in, sit down, if you need my help, tell me what you want me to do, I...
And your number one request, give me five minutes to go to the bathroom?
Right.
Absolutely. How about, how about we do this? How about you all come up with some, some ideas of some different ways that could, that you see that that could work? I'm not saying, hey, let's, everybody start being a substitute right now, let's make a motion, vote it more, but let's, you know, maybe it's not implemented until the 24th school year, but what is a way that we, as board members, can effectively go in and, I'm good with shadow, shadowing another teacher for the day to learn what they're going through, and then how can leadership also do the same thing? So, you all can see, you talk to educators every day, you know the classroom is not the same as it was when you were there previously, but I think teachers are trying to get it back to being more like...
Right. And the other thing is... I can say is, you know, maybe it's all principal love, and I'd like, like to come to eat lunch, I probably would, if you have a little occasion, just going to eat lunch with kids who live, and talk to them, and if you got, you know, your own child or a grandchild, have lunch with them once a month.
Yeah, we do that all the time. And I, I think there's two different ways of substituting, too, right? Because even though you're gonna be gone, the teacher's got more time to get the lesson plan, versus getting up on the seat, you didn't prepare anything that's...
Yeah, sort of in there.
Mr. Bledsoe, oh, go ahead. If I may, I mean, I feel like my job is to help principals cover. You've got Martha Arrington, who's absent. We try to, so I don't want you to think that we're, we sit over here all day long, because we don't, and our directors are not. They cover, we ask them to cover buildings. We cover buildings, Kevin and I, or we're called, hey, I gotta have got this situation, I need your help. We go over there and help them, so I don't want you to think that we're not in the buildings.
No, 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 I don't think that at all. I don't think y'all are not in the buildings.
We use our directors for principal subs, per se, or Kevin and I go do that.
Right. What I, this, this whole, the whole reasoning behind this is for us to get a better understanding of what over half of our employers, employees are...
We also have, yeah, we also have what's called curriculum monitoring cycle. It's a cycle that we use, it's four times, so that we are, it's intentional looking at data, but every school, we have different plans for every school, schools that don't need growth, I'm gonna be in there real good more. We walk them down, sit and talk to the teachers. Work today, Ms. Harris has been in POCs at Surry Central and East Surry for English 2, so we are working with students, we are working. Some of our folks are mentors, Luang goes and reads to kids, so, I mean, you know, I do feel like, you know, it has been a while since I've been a classroom teacher, but I do feel like I have a very good pulse on what is happening. I'm also the designated for ALPs, and Jody and I work a lot with suspension and troubled kids, and so, and I'm a lot of times putting the puzzle together to make sure we support those students, so I do feel like that I have a very good idea of what our, of what, and I have a teenager, so, I mean, and nephews, you know, two nephews, I, I understand that students may be a little bit different, but also, we hear Dr. Reeves always ask the teacher advisor council. I feel like that they give us a good pulse of what's going on, too, so I don't want you to think that we're not in classrooms or that we're not talking to teachers.
I think y'all are in schools a lot. I think you're in classrooms a lot, but it's more of a, we're gonna go in this classroom for an hour or, or two, whatever that time for...
Well, it always depends on the purpose, you know?
Right, right.
Every, every situation's different.
This will be easy for you, then.
Well, yeah, it should be. I, I guess the scary part for me, honestly, is to be tied down to one classroom for a day, because we, the three of us and directors don't know when a fire could happen on a minute. I mean, you know what I'm saying? Or a situation could happen. That's the only thing for me that would be a concern.
You would just have to have some type of backup designation plan, if you were gone to a conference. I think the thing with discipline that I've seen is the extreme, the swings. I don't know if there's more discipline. What I see is some of the discipline incidents are more severe.
Right.
So, that swing has, it's a wider, it's a wider arc, and so some of the more extreme things that we deal with are extreme, and those are probably the things you're hearing about. Well, those are things that, that people come to us and say, I don't have the training to handle this student or this situation. I've never seen this before. I've never had to deal with this. We have principals like that, teachers, that's what I would say I'm seeing since COVID, post-COVID, always there's, there's extreme situations, and it always has been and always will be, but I think on a, a societal issue...
I think on a, a societal issue, I see that. And the other thing I see, it seems that folks don't want to be held accountable.
You're right.
So that, that's not a school issue, but it becomes a school issue when the school tries to hold the student accountable. And you know, there was this gray area and now there's not. And so, oh, you mean there's not? No, I mean, there's got to be, there's got to be some hard fast. And I, I think we are kind of caught in the crosshairs of trying to really hold people accountable. Have high, high expectations, yet when maybe sometimes those things aren't the same in, in other areas. And so there's this, the students are, are kind of caught in the middle. Yes, we, we have to, we have to do it and we have to do it this way. Those are the two things I've witnessed and, and really feel like have changed in our schools. And you know, our schools are a microcosm of the macro. And so whatever's happening outside is happening inside our buildings, just on a smaller level. Uh, however, some of our schools, three, four, 500 people together, you're going to see those behaviors concentrated in areas and then um, exacerbated because they're so close together.
You're right. I mean, it's, there is an issue there and it's, it's not, not at the default of, of anybody in South County Schools, but it's a societal change. And there are a lot of kids that there's just, there's, you've got a few troublemakers in the classroom that just messing up for everybody else. And I'll be honest with you, I have a lot of people that come up to me from across the county and say, you know, we sent them to the office and nothing happens. So if there's no fear of, of retribution or, or fear of punishment, there's larger conversation as you get in. That's, that's where I'm at. But if y'all could come up with an idea, I appreciate it.
We'll work on it, our ideas.
Okay. Uh, we shifted the ma, uh, agenda to talk about the math games.
We still have that.
Yeah, well, we got to add this one, so we got, we'll be all right. We'll get back on schedule.
Six thirty, remember, hard cutoff, six thirty.
I don't think it's six o'clock.
Six is good too.
Mr. Hutch, you want to discuss the math games?
Let me just, let me just share with you the reason why I asked that. Let me, let me get here. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to read you an email. All right. Concerning the math games. When we met to this workshop, or when we went to this workshop, we thought we were getting the materials immediately, hard copy. Our P L C just received the ones we requested about two weeks ago. They sent out an email asking which ones we wanted to use and we put those down. So it has taken a while to get them. Once we got them, they immediately took them from us for our Thrive Math After School Tutoring Program. Not sure this helps, but this is my P L C's opinion. We haven't had time to use Explorer since the day of the workshop at the beginning of the year.
I mean, I'd be glad to address that with the school principal. I don't, I'm not aware of that. Um, I can only, you know, I can't answer that question for you um, because I'm not aware of the school or the situation. Um, what I do know is that they were given access of the digital. We purchased a digital, not a printed. We took it to a printing company and the printing of it was going to be more than the whole total allotment, which came at the allotment, and we can't spend a million dollars on copies. And so we met with principals and principals were given allotments at their schools. So I'd be glad if you could confidentially just tell me, we can follow up.
We, the printing was going to be how much?
The printing was going to be, the quote we got for printing was going to be over a million dollars and I would, that's more than, I would, will do that.
Did we not know this before we had this math proposal?
No, the math proposal that we purchased was the digital part. That's what we purchased was digital, then the teachers wanted them printed. And Mrs. Llewellyn has worked to, we've worked to make them digital as well, so.
I think the total amount of money was only, what, fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
No, the total allotment for P R C one eighty-nine was one seventy-three, seven thirty-four. That's the whole.
But the amount we agreed to buy, to pay for this tool was about fifty thousand.
Yep, you got a K eight tool, yep. And I saw them at, I've seen them at um, Pilot, we saw them at Pilot on Friday. I saw them at Dobson last week, so I have been seeing them. And then Ms. Llewellyn has been working, uh, this is a part of the S R funding that came. And so Ms. Llewellyn has organized the after-school tutoring for fourth through eighth grades. Um, and we're paying our teachers to do after-school tutoring for students. And they get a snack and then they get to do the game and then they're doing parent family engagement per the requirement of the P R C.
So we are not using it in the classroom?
Yeah, you can use some of them in the classroom. You have the whole, they have the whole digital, that's why I said I'd love to follow up with whoever the complaint came from. Because that's a principle, you know, I, I can't, I don't manage every building, so.
Looking at a, a, a bulleted uh, presentation. After-school Thrive Tutoring for fourth through eighth grade only?
The P R C was for, the Thrive Tutoring had to be for fourth through eighth grade. That was the requirement from the federal, from the P R C, from the program report code.
And then one bullet says only after-school or before-school during the regular school year?
That's a requirement from the, mhm.
And then move down to the next bullet to point, two, two down actually says, a teacher will use the elevation station for the eighth math game. If that's the case, then how can they only use it before and after school, but they will use it? You under, you understand?
They have to use, they have, do have to use it in the after-school to, tutoring program. That's how Ms. Llewellyn wrote the tutoring program grant, that, um, the application in C C I P. But we own it, we own the digital files K eight, so anybody can use it. I mean, um, I think somebody's just crossed hairs or gotten a technicality. I don't think this board is going to say, oh, you're using this after school, you can't use it during this. It, the whole point of the purchase was to help kids close math gaps. And teachers had asked for, um, in multiple budget requests, we had had principals ask for math resources. So it's a resource for them to use.
Yeah, I'm an anti-gotcha guy, I don't want to do gotcha.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean.
When, when you have four and five and six and seven start asking you questions, that means there's miscommunication somewhere or another. So I'm wondering if we, we don't need to go back somehow or another and, I wouldn't say do another presentation, but if we, if we had the training, why was, why was all the teachers in the training for it? But then they don't use it. Uh, you understand what I'm saying? It almost seems like a waste of time and I, I guess maybe I'm, I'm not understanding the way this thing was laid out. Because when it, when we did that that night, it had to be done that night. It had to be done, we had to vote on this fifty thousand and, and several of us voted against it because of that reason. I don't know anything about the math learning, to be honest with you. But my concern was why are we rushing into something that I walked through? And the reason all this came up to begin with was I, we did a walkthrough on a Monday. I asked the teacher on the way out the door, I believe a fifth grade teacher, how are you enjoying the math game? Because I can admit I'm wrong. And she said, I don't know, I haven't seen her. That was her only answer to me, she, she didn't know. And so, and then we see all these other instances of things popping up and they're saying, well, we're not allowed to use it. It has to be done after school, it has to be done during Thrive. And I don't even know what Thrive is, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to present that to you guys and say, what do we do? It's, it's the same as earlier, what do we do to fix it?
Certainly, well, I'd be glad to meet with principals and Ms. Llewellyn and we can certainly go back and re-communicate with them. The good thing of all of it is, is we own the product, we have it for K eight. So there, anybody can use it. If a parent needs, uh, let's say their kid needs help with counting, we've got a resource we can provide for them. It's supplemental, it's not the core resource. Uh, we bought a math textbook, this is a supplemental, so it may be that Kevin says, my kids have got this, I'm going to use something else. And he's not, you know, he might not do that for his kids because it might not meet, meet their needs, so. But we certainly can go back and re-communicate and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Whatever we need to do, I'm all about improvement, so. But the program, the after-school program, that was a part of it, of the grant from C C I P when we got it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
Anybody else want to ask questions before I ask questions? I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding.
Mhm.
Okay. So we had the fifty thousand dollars that we bought from Emerald Education, the math games. It was digital one.
Right.
But the fifty thousand included no printing of anything.
That's right.
And we didn't have an idea of what it would cost to do printing before we bought the digital version. So then we have a workshop with P D across the county for the math teachers, right?
It was only for middle school teachers and Emerald Education just did a small part of that. They taught, just the game, training on the games was only a part of that whole P D day.
Okay. So have they been, have they had the option since then to use?
Mhm, they created a spreadsheet on what they wanted printed and uh, Ms. Harris has worked with them and the principals.
So once they, okay, once they put on the spreadsheet what they wanted printed?
If they wanted it printed, you know, some people are using digital, it just depends. And they asked us to put some of the games and make them digital and we tried to like, if you've got a Chromebook, we can make a spinner and, you know, a game board and things like that.
Okay, so the ones that were put on the spreadsheet?
Mhm.
Weren't all printed because it was going to be a million dollars?
We asked teachers, you tell us what you want. That's what we did, yep. And some wanted, and I'll be honest, some looked at their data and they wanted this, some want, you know, every teacher's going to have their way of what they want, of what they want to use.
Okay, but they didn't have to do the printed version anyway? They could use digital the whole time?
We're trying, if, if, if it allowed, you know, some of those games would not have been conducive to digital.
I will be honest with you, I've heard, I've had, heard more bitching about this math game from across the county. That we have not, we didn't get it. We got the math game, now we don't have any of the printouts, so we, we don't know nothing about it. And then we did get a printout and I heard the same thing as somebody opposite emailed you. We got it and then we were told we can't use it, it can only be used for after-school. So let me ask you this question. Can they use their digital math games any teacher, anytime? And the people in the Thrive After School Tutoring, they're using it as well?
That's right, we own the digital products, so anybody can use it digitally. We have given them allotments, they can print it, they can do whatever, that's, yes, that would be correct.
So where's the disconnect in, we got a printed version and then was taken away and said it can only be used for tutoring?
I, 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 I can't answer that question because I haven't said that. So I'm not sure.
Okay.
But we can certainly, I'll be glad to meet with principals and we'll be glad to re-communicate. That's the only thing I know to do, but I'll be there. I'll be glad to do that. Here's what, so what, now what?
The math games are there, you, you don't have to have them printed to use, if you want to use them, you use them.
And we're really working to create them, to make them, because they, especially in middle school, they have them in Chromebooks and you could put them in a group of three or four with a Chromebook and, and work on them, so. And it's a supplemental resource, you know, it's not the core math, it's not our reveal math textbook, so.
So this is self-study with math?
Yes, sir, or any of them.
What do you want to think about the program?
She don't teach math anymore.
Oh, I thought she was a math teacher.
Uh, she was a math teacher, now she's not anymore.
Because we own the digital?
We have access to the digital.
So that don't, that don't break the copyright for us to create?
To make it digital, you're just taking it and put it in a digital form, like a digital spinner, that doesn't change copyright.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered, did it, did it break a copyright law to do that? Sometimes there's things that you can't do.
Certainly understand, yeah.
So on the printing side, you did, you, you tried to find out what it would cost to hire somebody to print it, it was way crazy. So you gave the principals the ability?
I gave it with the principals and I asked them, what did they want me to do?
And they were able to print it at their school for a couple of months. I got you. I, I, it took a minute for me to get that, okay. And some games are not conducive for printing material.
And I wouldn't do a digital for a first grader, I'm going with, or a kindergarten.
And I'm not going to share her opinion because that's not.
Oh. I just slightly noticed.
I'm not going to share that opinion.
So what I'm hearing, you, you just want me to re-communicate with the principals?
Would you, would you listen? That way, when we get, when I get the phone call or I get an email like that one, I like to be able to answer that without it being completely out. But it is designed for the last two years of elementary and all of the.
We, we own it K eight, but we, we, you can use it, we have them in kindergarten for second, third grade, yep. Mhm, supplemental resource.
Okay. I was lost in that too, I didn't know.
Yeah.
So let me throw out my apology, we are now seven minutes behind. We're going to fix that right here. Okay, any other questions to come out here?
That's good.
Okay, so Mrs. Samples, I think is going to talk to us about Smart Bus implementation and proposed bus driver hourly pay increase. I like it.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
You just want to fart right in the middle?
No, it's not. What position?
No, no, hot seat.
No, hot seat, hold on.
Yeah. Mr. Collins said if you would speak up for the old guy.
Speak up, okay, well, I can definitely do that.
Well, you're doing great.
I'm happy to speak up, you can turn me down if I need to.
No, I just turned you up.
Oh, okay. So um, Smart Bus implementation update is what I was asked to give. So we are very transparent about that, we are behind schedule. It is of no fault of our own. Um, there was some equipment issues with Edulog, which is our company. And we are still waiting on a bracket piece that is used to install those readers. So today, I just loaded them in my truck. Before I came up here, we received the cards, so it's an R F I D card that each child will be assigned to them, is already assigned to them, and they will scan that when they enter the bus. So we have the cards, we could start scanning them end of the week if the readers were installed on the buses. So I took one thing away and I told the company, I don't want you to install them, we will install them. Just get me the piece that we need to install them. And I talked to our rep again today, I talk to them once a week and he said, Amy, just duct tape the things on there. And I said, well, that's one of the reasons we're having issues with the tablets in the first place is because when they were installed last year, sometime in twenty twenty-three, they chose to take black electrical tape and tape them together, the cords, instead of putting this bracket that would have supposed to have already been on there. And I said, so I'm going to do that on four E C buses so that I can get it rolling. But the rest of them, I need to continue to wait on these pieces, so get them to me now. I need those pieces now. So that's going to be the plan, is on the four E C buses, we're going to go ahead and install the readers, that can be done tomorrow. And then Edulog will upload to each bus, each child that's on that build for that route, their card, so that when they scan it, it identifies them as being a child that's on that route.
So the bracket is only to hold the plug to the frame of the bus?
The bracket holds the two pieces of cord together, it's a USB port and then a cord.
So not the iPad, dude?
No, that's on what we call a cradle, and the cradles are already on there. This is, and it's plugged in, and then the reader plugs into that
Okay.
and then sits affixed to the, the front dash of the bus, basically.
So you pull reader off every night, charge it if you need to?
Yes, well, no, not the reader, the reader is affixed and stays on the bus.
Okay.
The tablet comes out of the cradle and that's what's charged every night. It also charges while the bus is running, but we ask them to take those off every night and take them in and charge them.
Okay.
That's what they do.
Is the problem, Amy, the, without the bracket, the, the vibration of the bus pulling, pulling this apart for disconnection?
What we've been seeing is we were experiencing some technical issues, some tablets not charging, some tablets losing connectivity. And so we got to digging into the issue and we were like, well, right, here's the problem. These two cords are no longer together, they're no longer connected. So then I started looking at, well, they're black electrical taped together, surely that wasn't the design of this. Surely, you know, Rednecks didn't design this and this is what we're paying for. And when I got to looking, there was a black bracket that shouldn't have been installed on it. So I started asking questions, where are the brackets, why were they not installed? And the company, of course, said, oh, we installed those. It's like, well, I'll show you every bus, they're not installing any of them. But I can take you to a neighboring district where they are installed on those and they're not having any same issues. So it came back to, the people in my shop said, well, we remember the installers and they were just chunking pieces in a box and would believe they just throw those boxes away. So another reason why I'm choosing not to allow them to install them, because my daddy taught me, do it once, do it right or do it twice. So I want them done correctly, or we're going to continue to have issues with the readers coming unplugged and not staying connected and, and so I don't want there to be issues. So we're going to try to install them correctly with that harness piece that they're supposed to have.
Probably a couple of metal screws into the dash or something?
On the reader, yes.
What's their concern?
So they have now sent an email at the end of last week to the company that builds the readers and have put it off on them, saying, can we purchase this, just that piece of the equipment without the whole cradle? Um, and I just let them know I will not be purchasing anything, that I didn't throw them away and I didn't not install them. And so you'll need to eat that cost. And I, I just think that's a good way to do business.
They need to talk to the installers, they need to do them, right? They need to talk to the installers, they didn't do them right. So explain this, how this worked to me, we, the Smart Bus program was everything?
It's a pilot.
Okay, it was a pilot, the iPads came. They installed it on the bus, but didn't put the bracket on there correctly. And it's taken them how long?
So it's probably been over a month since I've, well, right at two months since I've requested the pieces that they haven't sent to me.
Have they already been paid?
They were paid for the installation of the cradles that are on the bus, yes, sir. We're going to install the readers ourself, the company is not being paid to install them. There was a quote in there for that installation and I told them that we would forego that and not pay that, that we would install them ourselves. Instead of paying that additional fee.
So all the information, all that is just already done?
It is, yes, sir.
Everything's done and just waiting?
Just waiting on the readers.
And in your, in your opinion, as a transportation director, is this going to help alleviate possibly some of the issues of finding bus drivers? Because then, pretty much, I could get all the new bus routed and I could drive that route.
It, it is not going to be a one size fits all, again, I'm just gonna be transparent about that, but it will definitely make it easier for a substitute driver to get on that bus and be able to make turn by turn based on the route that is uploaded into that tablet. Um, I want to clear up one misconception that I think there may be. So when students get onboard, when they onboard is what that's called, when they onboard and scan, it does not create a route based on which child scans to get on that bus for that day. That is not how the program is created, there is not, with my research, there is not a program that will do that, that is offered for school buses. So TMS is our program that we route buses by. It is an uploaded TMS embedded route on that tablet. So what will happen is, that driver will punch into that tablet and can pull up AM or PM route and it will give them turn by turn directions, just like your GPS would. But it's not gonna tell you if that child is on or off the bus, it won't tell you that. Now, when you pull up to that stop, if that child's not there, you just mash skip stop and continue on the route and it'll give you the directions to the next stop.
So even if they scanned in, it doesn't tell them that they're on the bus?
So it, it does, but it doesn't change the route.
Right, it doesn't change the route.
The route is what the route is. So what happens when a kiddo gets on the bus and scans? So the, the children are also embedded in that tablet, they're uploaded as a participant in that route. They ride that, route has been assigned to them. So a kid gets on the bus and they scan their card in the mornings. When the driver pulls up to that stop, it'll list, okay, at 5:13 East Atkins Street, these four children should be there, is what it tells the driver when they pull up to that stop. So as each child scans their card, they turn green. Like if Dr. Daly scans her card, her name pops up, she turns green. Then Mr. Vai pops up, his name turns yellow because yellow means I'm on this route, but this isn't really my stop. But he just decided to join her, her stop this morning, okay? Then maybe three more kids scan and get on and they all turn green, that's their stop, they're supposed to get on there. But let's say Dr. Reeves, he's decided, he fit the night, Mr. Vai the night before and he decides he's gonna scan and get on there. What happens to Dr. Reeves is he turns red, it'll scan Dr. Travis Reeves, but his name will turn red. So that tells the bus driver, this is not a kid who's scheduled on this route, this is not a kid who rides my bus. Same thing when you're at the school in the afternoon and kids are scanning to onboard in the afternoon. They turn green if they're on the route, yellow if, well, not yellow, they'll turn green because they're on that route. But if a kid scans and they're on the wrong bus, they're gonna turn red. So then that should, once we have drivers trained, that should queue a driver. I have a kid who's trying to get on my bus, that I need to know a reason why they're on this bus, I need to know the rationale. So I'm gonna contact the adult, the staff member, the admin who's standing out there at buses and say, hey, does this child have permission to ride the bus home? He says he's going home with Johnny. Um, and every school has their own system for how they deal with that. It's typically, both children bring a note saying they're gonna ride home with one another. Middle school and high school, we know it's not that way, but an admin or a staff member should clarify, yes, that child is going to ride this bus home with that child and they're good to be on your route. And it will still, I can pull that data later and say, oh, yes, he scanned to ride that route, but he wasn't assigned to that route, that information stays in that tablet. That kiddo scanned on or off that bus and what location they scanned on or off.
You just brought something up I was wondering. When they scan that they're, that they're getting on the bus in the afternoon, when the driver runs the entire route and comes back to the school, is there any summary that says, hey, there's still a kid on there somewhere, their back seat's asleep and didn't get off?
I don't know that there is a summary.
Cause you hear about that happening all the time?
Yes, and that, which is why they've installed child reminds on the back of every bus. You have to check every seat and turn that off, that's that beeping noise we had a problem with. The child remind Mr. Vai. So, I'm sorry, I should have. But I don't know, that's a good question, I'll clarify that on Thursday. It should still have on your, on the tablet, a list of those students who have not gone off the bus, but I haven't seen it do that. So I will ask to make sure that it does that.
Are they scanning getting off, dude?
They do scan to get off, onboarding and offboarding.
And that way they can go back and find out where they got off at what time?
Right, and it does keep a count, so if 23 students scan, or 23, that's a low bus, 72 kids scanned to get on, we've got a full bus, then 72 children should have scanned to get off that same bus.
So where will this be completely, 100% when you get the brackets?
That's a good question, so the plan is, we have the cards now, we have the readers now, we'll do the first four EC buses, and we're doing that simply because that's the easiest. There's an adult on there that's gonna be able to scan them off and on. And then we'll start doing elementary schools, and as long as it continues to roll, then we should have that, um, all elementary schools. If y'all tell me install them and, and put duct tape around them or electrical tape, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna tell you that it may create other issues with the software.
I was gonna say, any good maintenance man knows you don't use electric tape, duct tape. It lasts 200 miles an hour.
Yes, but a, a bus, I don't know if you've ridden a, a route in Surco County lately, but it is a constant, like, vibration, it just is, buses don't ride smoothly.
I spent a lot of years on yellow buses in Surco County.
Right, exactly, and, and so we, um, we wanna make sure that we do it right. Now, I, I will be candid with you and say, I spoke with Derek Graham, who used to be our state transportation, he was over that, and he spoke with me today, he's part of my team with Edge Log, and he said, Amy, it's time for you to be the squeaky wheel, you've been nice long enough. He said, I know it's, you want to kind of keep good collegial relationships with them and, and work with them, he said, but it's time that you ruffle some feathers. So I probably, um, will end up having to do that, I don't want that to be the way that I get things done.
I don't mind being that person for you if you need me to be?
I think, I think I can handle it, I'm, I'm pretty good at that, if need be. So I reached out this afternoon and to Edge Log again, but I will be reaching out tomorrow to the owner of the company who has the brackets. I'm just saying, I, I need these, what can we do to get them?
Well, they're, they're obviously not trying to be collegiate, because they're trying to tell you you're wrong and you put it on there, you messed them up.
All of them? Well, my, I'll be honest with you, the reason that I had asked for the Smart Bus to be on there was to see how close we were to this, because maybe that is one way that we can help alleviate the problem that we've talked about with bus drivers. That is of no fault to the staff in this county. Uh, I feel like the principals a whole lot of time catch the flag. They can't help that, you know, an hour before a bus route, they got a call. So any ways that we can try to think of, and that's Dr. Reeves and I talked about, is there, you know, what ways can we think of to think outside of the box to where we're getting these kids here at home?
And if we have a, a teacher driving a, a yellow bus with stops, that's, that's certainly gonna be helpful if they know where the kids are getting on and off and, and with the turn by turn navigation. I think the other part of this, Amy, is the parent app, is it here comes the bus?
Um, it's just called Parent Portal.
Parent Portal, so they're gonna be able to track their students on the bus and?
And they've been doing that since the first of the year, and that is going really well, parents appreciate that.
So that's active now?
It is active now, and it works well. It is tracking the bus, just via the GPS. The student ridership is what's this scanning off and on, that's called student ridership. And that serves a parent, but it serves our district more than, more than parents. It can give them a real time update at 2:58, your child scanned to get on bus 155 at Metta View Magnum Middle School. It, it will give them that alert. At 4:05, your child scanned at 319, you know, 20th Road. So it, it gives that kind of information, but also the Parent Portal app gives them that right now. It gives them, not that explicit of data, but it says to them, uh, the bus is one mile from your stop. So in other words, get your child ready to get, get ready to back there, getting ready to beat the bus. So it gives them those kinds of updates now. And for instance, I had a phone call on Friday evening, a Scholz bus had, um, broken down and the parent called and said, hey, can you help me, my child is not at home yet. And I said, let me see where that bus is, and by the way, have you downloaded the Parent Portal app? It's really easy, I'll help you be able to do that, so it's just a really good way. Man, I'm glad my mom and dad didn't have that kind of stuff when I was riding the bus. Or my car or anything else, but, so it, it is helpful. And, um, our plan moving forward is, and I'm working with Derek Graham, but the Smart Bus pilot runs out in June of 2024. We need the monies encumbered by September of 2024. But what Derek is working with me on, and we'll of course have to go through some things to work on this, but we still have funds that have been unencumbered that could potentially get us the programming and the services through 2026 school year. And so I think if we're smart with our money, we can use the money that's been granted to us to continue to service without it being a cost to the district and be able to give us some real time data on, if it is beneficial to us, then moving forward past that, what do we wish as a district to keep implemented and what do we wish to pull back from as, as cost savings come? Because this will have to come out of our O56 budget when we decide to move forward or not move forward with it.
So the navigation aspect of this, is it being used now?
So not the turn by turn, so there's several different facets of it. We use what's called time and attendance, the portion of time and attendance, that's where bus drivers clock in and out and substitutes can do that as well. Then there is turn by turn directions, which is what substitutes would use. We have the ability to use that now, but we, I need to be able to show people how to do that. And the thing that is, I've offered last week two times to ride with a substitute driver and neither one of them wanted me to ride. And I think I might have made them nervous, but I said, it's no judgment, I just love riding buses and I wanna help you with the route, and they were like, really, really, I, I have it, I've got it, but thank you. So I didn't wanna impose on them, but, um, the turn by turn directions will be helpful for a substitute. But again, the turn by turn directions are only going to be as good as the embedded route in the system. So how do we keep that route updated? Well, schools have to send in transportation needs and adjustments, that's on the spreadsheet. So if little Johnny has not rode the bus in three weeks and he no longer is riding that route, but we're still gonna be stopping there. Or if Sarah Ann has been added to the route two days ago, but they didn't let us know that, that route's not gonna be up to date, but it'll update in real time, um, if we're, if we're given the appropriate information from the schools.
So it's imperative that they give you all, give that information?
It is, it's, it's utmost importance that we have it to be able to keep it updated in TMS because the information on the turn by turn directions is only as good as the data in TMS. That, it's just pulling from that, it's not making up its own route, it's not, it's only as good as the data that's in TMS.
Well, I really liked the fact that you can see where the buses are.
I love that.
So if something happens, it breaks down, you can get to them quicker versus, I'm somewhere between this exit and that exit?
And it gives me the ability, so when there was a bus incident, um, Monday, two weeks ago, I needed to get to that bus and the driver was so disheveled, he couldn't really tell me his location and he wasn't at an address, he was on 268. So I was able to go into the app, put his bus number in, and it gave me, my Google Maps gave me turn by turn to get to him in the quickest way possible. So I really appreciate that and I like that, um, and it just makes me feel more well-equipped to be able to service them. My mechanics are the same way, they go straight to a bus that's broke down using those directions if they need to.
Good, so there's some benefits we really didn't even know when we got in.
There are some benefits, there are some things that I suggest to them often about some improvements they can make, um, to their programming and, and things like that, but there are many benefits that I feel like outweigh the, the things that are a little bit of a headache.
And as a pilot, you're helping them refine that?
Yes, we're, we're trying our best. We've already taken some of Shane's suggestions and redone some programming, even on the time and attendance side and how it best works with Link. So last week he was like, oh, man, they improved that and this update, cause it's constantly updating, just like any app does.
So you can tell exactly how many hours the drivers are driving, so they can get paid off that to the pay record?
That's right, yes, sir, and then it just uploads into Link.
Good, okay. Well, that leads us to the next one, any other questions about Smart Bus? Would you, would you just talk about your pay rate?
Sure, I'll be happy to. Okay, so the pay update is the state, um, we knew that there would be a second allotment of funds intended purely and only for driver pay raise increase, hourly rate of pay. So our survey lump sum was two, um, I don't know, are y'all, can y'all look at the spreadsheet? Okay, so in the bottom left of that spreadsheet, the amount that we've allotted was 28,464. Audra had me go ahead and divide out what benefits would be, so we took out 1.3267, leaving us with an approximate 21,454.74. And I did several different figures to try to see what percentage would get us as close as possible to spending the greatest amount of that money. And so we did several different figures, or I did several different figures, and came to, um, a 1.5% raise would utilize most of those funds without, I didn't want us to go over. Because if we go over, then that comes out of the balance of O56. These funds will be in O56, and this will be an occurring rate, so whatever their hourly rate of pay goes up to, that will be reoccurring each year. And you see there, under the purple, the 1.5%, their years of service is how we do that, and their current pay ra, pay rate, and their increased at 1.5% pay rate. So it's anywhere from a 24 cent an hour raise to a 28 cent an hour raise for drivers. And if you, I don't know, if you'll look, column H at the bottom, we would use just in raise, not benefits, 18 to 97.08. And I felt comfortable with that, Audra felt comfortable with that, um, but I'm happy to look at other percentages if possible. And this would need to be prorated, so I figured it on, um, 180 days of school for regular drivers and on drivers that are considered full-time, which are six hours or more that get benefits, like holiday pays and things, we figured them on 200 days of pay to get to that amount.
So I see some, like the max 21 plus years, 1893, but I see a couple over here that are like 20, 2250 an hour.
So 2250 an hour, those, I probably should have taken those out, so 2250 an hour is a person that, there, that is their time and a half pay, so maybe they're an eight hour custodian and they're also driving the bus for us, which is also why we want to be able to hire the drivers if possible, because that does eat away at my budget. But that's also faithful people who are choosing to work above and beyond their 40 hours a week and doing more than their diligence to make sure our kids get to them from school. So that's why they've compensated the time and a half.
So the bus part is 1893, thanks?
That is correct.
So if you have, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to start. If you have a custodian, and, and is the, what was the role called, the?
Bustodian.
Bustodian.
If you have a bustodian, is there just that extra money coming out of your funds? And then the, how, how is that, cause it's two separate funds?
So a bustodian is actually a role, that's their job. So their 40 hours is divided between their bus hours and their custodial hours. So that, and they have a different rate of pay as a custodian, $15 an hour, and then their bus rate of pay when they're clocked in as a bus driver is a different rate of pay, whatever their hours.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is one's coming out of school funds and others coming out of the O56.
I think you say some in and out differently.
In Link, there's a different clock in and clock out.
So that 2250 would be, they make over 40 hours, so you gotta pay them time and a half and that's why it's a little, okay?
Yeah, they're a full-time custodian, really, who, we have to get to drive a bus too.
So when that time and a half, the half pay, the half pickup is coming out of O56?
Yes, sir, but not their benefits, so their benefits comes out of their initial role, custodial, and then their hourly rate of pay, time and a half, it comes out of O56 transportation.
And that should really just be on an emergency basis?
That, that is what, um, that is the plan, and that is what I tell administrators often. However, we have at least three, three, we have three full-time employees who also are the permanent part-time drivers of the routes at their schools. But it's also schools, for instance, Cedar Ridge has two. And I have tried to put every driver that we've hired at Cedar Ridge, but I have to make a choice at the end of the day, do I want a driver who, they live close to Metta View and there's a route open and they're willing to drive that? Do I want to take them up and offer them? Do I want to take them up and offer them that? Or force them to take a job at Cedar Ridge where they may not take the position? Well, I'm going to choose to, to have a driver, to hire a driver.
I think I'll watch this. Has to be on the table with the driver shortage.
Right.
We're going to have to pay more than what we normally would, do what we normally wouldn't do. But that was why I wanted to know about the Smart Bus and just some ideas and.
I'd like to thank all the turn by turn because now they don't have that kid, right? That was an Allegheny that took, took all the kids on last count because he was messing with them or something. Yeah, that, that would take care of that problem.
Wouldn't have that problem.
And I'll tell you, Mr. Whittson, let me just say, one of the things that I, I talk to people all the time who want to come and be employed by Sari County Schools. Um, when it comes to bus positions, I'm, I'm offering people less than four hours of work a day. That scenario only fits a very small criteria of people that that would work for. And I, that is of no fault to anyone sitting in this room, nor even the state. But, but we got to, you're right, think outside the box, but we've got to think, how can we meet the needs of more than one role to be able to make this person employable?
Because you've also got some of the cafeteria workers and drives, so they're.
We, we have a few of those, just a few.
Now, there was TAs that were doing it, but then doing it because they were losing some time, they were getting rid of time. What was there? There's something that I heard, something about TAs weren't doing it because they were, what was it?
We have one TA that is currently doing her TA position and driving her route.
It's a little bit more challenging if they're an EC TA because it's hard to take them out of that role. If they have to go out early.
So they're leaving, okay.
That, that is a little bit of concern, but it is a concern.
Division's concerned.
Yes, if they're assigned to an EC classroom and we're pulling out them out, even if it's five, 10, 15 minutes out of the classroom that they're hired to be in there, that's.
And we also, TAs, um, they have to be able to get their hours, their work hours in for the week as a TA. And so that bus, maybe they're a 7:15 or a 7:30 TA and that bus didn't get here until 7:45. And so they're not able to clock in and go in their classroom. And then they need to go crank the bus or get on the bus before the kids are dismissed. So it creates those types of issues as well.
But we've had TAs drive.
Currently, we just have one.
Is that something that can be worked out internally? If, would there be more TAs that would want to do that? To get licensed and do that, if we can work something out within internally where that wouldn't be penalized for not clocking in the.
I don't know. I can tell you there are not people knocking on the door wanting to get their bus licensed. It's not, I mean, people just don't want to drive a bus, but.
This is the thinking out of box, what I was talking about. Is there a way that we can internally incentivize that or does a TA want to do that?
It's definitely worth at least exploring to see. I don't know that we can slide their hours.
A little bit different, okay, but like there's a lot of, no, this, you'll can see Larry Powell, EC TA, runs midday route for EC. You know, so there's a lot of difference.
Just not.
Pieces to it, isn't it? Now, I know we, we have to take care of the buses for Mount Airylken, but we also got Mount Airylken on here. Are we responsible for running?
We pay Mount Airylken's salary, so you're only voting, of course, for our staff, but their board will need to approve um, both of their respective pay raises as well.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve the 1.5% pay raise for bus drivers. So, Mr. Whittaker, you got both of those done?
Do, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay, the Retro Act, that is done.
Retro Act back to the.
To August.
August. Good.
I'm good with that.
Good. Okay. All those, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no?
Thank you. Y'all appreciate.
Take care. I'm just wishing for a few more.
Absolutely. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Now you can go home. All right, letter land materials. For, these are third, second and third grade? Okay. Close to me. We're only having seven. Yeah, I do too. So we're talking about second and third grade because we already got the kindergarten first here, okay?
Yes. So we, um, of course are looking to purchase letter land curriculum for second and third grade students, um, next year. Um, you have three quotes attached there. The first quote is for the actual letter land materials. So that would be each teacher, um, getting a pack. Um, there's also a quote for the training. And then a renewal of the phonics online, which is what the teachers use. You've probably seen that in some of your board visits, um, what the teachers use as they're teaching. Um, there's a renewal there for our kindergarten and first grade teachers. So the total for that quote is $49,229. Um, and that would be utilizing our O-85 funds from the state, which are earmarked for literacy and letters implementation. And you'll see there's also a sole source letter attached there.
Okay. So I mean, obviously using their, their funds, we got the money and the votes. Is there any nothing else we would, this will take the place of? Obviously something we need, obviously being in the classrooms and seeing how they're using it. I mean, last week it was amazing to see something.
I liked Letterland. Should never got away from phonics.
It's amazing how we went from the full circle back. Because that's how we learned to read.
I know we, uh, purchase.
All right, Mr. Whittaker, made a motion for introduction second. Any further discussion, anything else we need to know? She looks like she wants to say something, but she's not. So that would include the training, um, the online phonics renewal and then the second and third grade packs for each teacher. 35, second grade, 33, third grade. Okay. Any other discussion? All those, all right, we got most of the same.
What'd you say?
No.
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? There you go. They just want to get back on track.
So I did have something additional to say if you would entertain me for just a moment. I'd like to go back and answer that question I asked earlier. If I may do that. So, Mr. Whittson, you asked how many of those students in that 44% are good cause exemptions? So out, we have 230 students who would be part of that 400 and 44%. 30 of those 230 have, are a good cause exemption. Um, so if you take out those 30, we have 38.83% of our students, not counting those good cause exemptions, who've met a pathway through one of those other alternatives, which is still higher than last year's number, which also included, um, those who have a good cause exemption.
So you're talking about 12, 13% or something like that.
And, and I thought you might want to know how we ended the year last year. And just because that might be important as well. So at the end of the school year last year, at the, after EOG, 78% of our students had met a pathway. After summer reading camp, which was very successful for us, we had about 85%. So.
So we went from 33% in mid-year to 85.
Yes, and I expect that to be higher this year. I just thought you might want to.
That's great to know.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, that's, that's great news. That's the best thing I've heard today, to be honest with you. All right, safety grant proposal. Okay, this is the one we looked at at the last meeting and we will discuss it a little further. Is that correct? Okay. So we got the recommendations from, from the amount that was available. The vestibules, we talked about already tonight, if we may be able to look at the R and R, maybe they'll take care of some of that. Who, it says recommendations. Is this from?
This is mine.
Mine, okay. And we've, we've addressed the window film issue about heat, talked about that, right? So, okay.
How many cameras is it?
Cameras?
Yeah. 50. 90. How many are still being installed from the last ones we approved back last year? Because here's my, here's what I'm scared of. Before we get all these cameras put up, they're going to be out of date and they're going to have to be put up again. I think we already have more than one person. Chet does a fantastic job, but he's one man. It's a little unrealistic in my mind to have Chet by himself putting up all these cameras and install every time there's a TV put up. I know we're trying to get finished, don't hate me Clark, but I got to read something. Two Union County High School students found guns on campus. Two loaded guns found at Durham Rocky Mountain Schools. Gunloads of bullets found in students' backpack. Loaded gun found in pre-K students' bag, new head over. Number of guns found in US schools is spiked. And they headline. Pre-K. It's headline after headline after headline. And this is just North Carolina. This is all recent. 17 hours ago, one month ago, two weeks ago. And all I done wasn't anything fancy. I just put weapons found in North Carolina schools. I will say one more thing, the survey that we surveyed our staff last year. Top response is keyless entry, which we've done, number two, metal detectors. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I fought for it for a year and a half. The staff has asked for them and that's all I'm going to say.
So we, we are estimating two sets for each high school, one for each set for each middle school, looking at $200,000. How are we going to do that for every elementary school, every middle school, every high school? Where do we, how do we fund it? This is my question.
Well, my problem would be to have an SRO officer at every school every day. Above having another, I think that would be, you know, a better solution to me. The metal detectors, fine. I also have both, SRO for them. My priority would be to have an officer in the building.
I did know in the safety committee, we, uh, we talked about being athletic events in terms of the metal detectors and looking, looking further with that. And I know in our discussions with a salesperson on other schools, it seemed like there were a couple of schools that sort of weighed into this type of protection with, with purchase of a limited number, say a couple or whatever. And I was just thinking, if, uh, if we had a sort of a known threat that we can utilize metal detectors at a school or athletic event and, and just as a start to allocate those to this school, you know, as, as mobile as you, I mean, yeah, they're very mobile. So, uh, if we could, uh, I don't think we're, me personally, would need to look at metal detectors, routine at every school or class. But if we had availability of a couple, I'm, you know, for a, a threat that we perceive to be, be out. Of course, that's a great area too. And let me set where it's a school system.
It'd have to be moved around.
Detector that we could use anywhere within our district.
I didn't get a chance to go to Hickory, so tell me for my information. I was at Hickory side of the high school Saturday event, the science fair. And in the hallway of the auditorium, it looked like this is what we're talking about. Two of them were soft sided and the rest of them looked like there were like seven or eight there. That's what we're talking about, the same height. Okay. And would be placed at a door.
Yes.
Okay.
Staff by, usually staff by the school's staff. They come in and they walk straight through.
Okay. They just have to plug it in.
And all of a sudden, whoop, you hear a beep. That one's pulled off the side and they wind them and start checking.
Had a school personnel visit. That was cool.
Yeah, or this. Now, I'm having, I looked here, I see weapons detectors, two sets for each high school, one set for each middle school, $200,000. I typed in just to see, what's the cost of a metal detector in school? Around $4,000? Around $4,000? Or $6,000 for the top model? How did we get to $200,000?
Worth of 20, because that's 20,000.
Once we looked at it in Hickory, I think they were $18,000 a pair.
A pair.
Yeah, I'm just.
I mean, I just got the quote from what Hickory told us, the ones that we visited.
These are weapon image detectors, so I think they.
They're $18,000. So that'd be 18.
Thing about this is you set it, you set it for different sizes of weapons.
So that's $54,000 for all three high schools.
You got to have it as a pair. Explain that.
No, they have, they have to be in a pair. You can't, you can't se- separate, just have them.
I was thinking of.
No, these are two poles.
Oh, with a top across.
You were thinking the same thing.
Well, what I saw, I know it was a meter.
Those are, uh, what's the word? Where they can be moved to another spot.
Oh, so these are just two poles. They're two, one, you're talking about it's different.
It is, we, we, we run the door to the football field.
These are portable.
It's not.
I had plum blen there for a minute.
At all levels of school, it is not feasible. Just to, I would love it if it was, but it's not feasible to, you know, you're talking half a million dollars. Uh, a lot of, a lot of upgrades that need to be done. But I would at least like for, because I'm telling you, this clear bag thing is where my head is useless. A metal detector is useless.
Well, I think, but I think it is, I mean, colleges are using it now because it is effective for them. Because you can't get it to carry in.
They have a metal detector.
But I've been against these state football games. There is no metal detector. You walk through it and if you don't have a clear bag, you can't take it in.
That's useless.
It's, it's just a layer, um, pretty secure. I mean, it's.
But anyway. I, I would at least like to see a start of athletic events.
If we started athletic events, I think you need a minimum of two per high school.
One at the gates. Two sets.
Yes. Yes, two, meaning.
Or a set, two a set.
And they do come in a pair, but the, the ones that we, I think Hickory quoted were 16,000 a piece or 18,000 a piece. The ones Guilford County has, I think are more like 40,000 a piece. I don't know what brand Preside has.
Yeah, I should have took the picture off.
I knew that later, actually. I just don't remember where I put it.
But at North Shore High School, if we try to implement it during the regular school day, that's, you know, the implementation during a school day is, is a, it's a beast. As far as just, the school we visited, Hickory had two entrances. It was all in one room. It's kind of like our middle schools. Implementation of middle school would be pretty easy, elementary, easy, high school.
Yeah, they're actually.
We go to kids coming and going to high schools. Like I said, they just.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
I'd love to.
That's got to run across the top, right?
Yes, and that one, that one, we take that one to the door, take the one that, they actually have. Seven, eight that covers all the main entrance.
And that's what I saw there for their auditorium. But they got to be close to a plug, you're right, because you got to have power.
I say I'll have to say. Everything on that list is needed. Everything on that list is needed. But I would, you know, I said that I wouldn't, I wouldn't bug to spend over 375 on the track and fields. I would bug to pull some money out of savings for metal detectors that I won for taxes.
So how do we resolve that? What do we take off and what do we add out of the one? We've got one thing of safety. And what are, what are the sources do we have?
These are high schools.
Two sets is at 120.
That'd be six at, six?
Six.
Six at 20 a piece is 120. But if you do six metal detectors at the high schools for athletic events, that's 120,000. That leaves you 30,000 for the radios.
I would say the radios are, whether it comes from the safety or not, we have got to purchase radios. I will say the radios are, whether it comes from the safety or not, we have got to purchase radios.
28,087,84.
The R and R mode, is it R and R?
Yeah, probably.
Can it be used for-
Replacing arrest.
I don't think it can be used for any-
No, can it be used for the building signage?
Possibly, yeah, possibly, I'd have to ask also.
It'd be 40, 40 between those three, and the rest is going to be more than 40. Because we get calls just out of call. Because I think, I think the safety issue with the directional signs and the building labels is huge. Firefighters long, long to come in for-
That's been a request from one of our principals for a year now, and Holly has worked on it with Eric Southern, with Robert.
And done a fantastic job, by the way.
We're trying to be consistent and so it's-
Let me ask you this, basketball season is about to, is about over. Do you think there's any other type of funding or grant that may happen between now and the fall?
Because really we'll need it for baseball.
Right.
I anticipate there will be another safety grant that comes out in the fall, and probably SROs will be a part of that too.
Right.
There'll be an equipment one, I mean, we got a letter today that said, you know, another 35 million for next year. Because the, they approved 70, and they put 35 out this year, and 35 will go out next year. And then the second part of that, they'll have additional funds for, I anticipate, SRO grant. Because it's, that SRO grants every two years. We're in the second year of the grant. So yes, sir, I do anticipate in the fall, I say in the fall, we didn't get, we didn't get approval, that we got the grant until-
Until January.
Like January, almost February.
But it's a two-part grant, two, two years.
They, they allocated 70 million dollars for two years, 35 for this year, 35 for next. That's just on equipment. When I, when we apply for the SRO grant, once you get it, you don't have to apply the second year, because that money rolls over to the next year.
That's what they say it does.
For two years, and then you have to apply again.
We reapply the next year.
To next year, all the, all the SROs that we have, you know, it's funded up, we'll have to apply.
So we could reasonably say that we should be receiving 150,000 again.
Maybe, because this 450 came out of the 35 first month.
That's correct.
We gotta reapply the 35, and we hope we would get some of that.
So boys put 120 on high school metal detectors for events, not just necessarily athletic events, but if we have a graduation inside, or events. Then we would still have enough money to buy the radios that are a dire necessity. The cameras, if we had them yesterday, still wouldn't be installed. So, that 60,000 we can take off. There are 40,000 there are needed in signage and labels.
And we wouldn't be able to get any of the film, because apart, we were going to get like 21,000 with film.
I can pursue the labels and the directional signs through R and R. At the end of the day, you do have 700,000 in capital fund balances, flexible money. That, that, that purchase could be made out of that, that, those funds.
Which could be made out of that?
The directional signage and the school building labels.
40,000. Now, is that carried over fund balance? So we don't have to spend, okay. So we could, we could take that 40,000 out of the 700. And then all we'd be missing would be cameras and windows off of whatever we're up on. If, with that, okay. You know, I think, is that something we need to, I mean, we got the award, we need to make the decision. It looks like we would need-
Y'all ordered it last time, so you're the first to do it now.
Well, when you order this type of stuff, it seems like it takes forever for-
Well, the handheld radios to me sound like no brainer, we need to get those on board. The other thing is, you know, the metal, are the weapons attempting, I gotta, that would be the question. Is the 120, the remaining 120 for that. And then we would still need to quota, right, and make sure that we can get it for 20. And that's including, I'm guessing 18 plus tax and shipping. And then we'll have Tony help us put them together.
Well, and there's also gotta be some training that goes with that, and I would hope if we're gonna purchase that much, we, we get some kind of training.
I, I'm really concerned about school personnel having to, to search people. I think if we had an SRO at the games, then we get their help.
We have that many usually at our anyway, don't we, so?
And we have four, I think, at North Surry, Surrey Central Basketball.
I'm used to seeing them used it coming off the bus and right through there they go. So, you know, the-
They come in Hickory like off the bus, it's just like a herd of cattle, is that right?
And I think that's gotta be, if you go to the middle school schools, it's gotta be two places, where they come in off the buses and when they get out of the car. But at North Surry, there's at least 20 different entrances where they can come in.
I'll set up for a while.
Are we, are we now looking at the metal detectors now or waiting till the fall?
I think if you ordered them now, it would be implemented in the fall.
Yeah, there's no way to get them here, that's the, I don't think.
Hickory, it took them several months to get the, the machines in and get their staff trained. I anticipate you may have some policy that would need to be reviewed and potentially changed. Law enforcement training, there's, I think, a series of events that would need to occur before we just roll them out and say, okay, we've got them. We, we would need to do a lot of planning and preparation.
And hope we never detect a single weapon?
That's exactly right.
And communication is another big part of that, just like we did with clear bag, we've got to roll a communication plan out.
Yeah, make sure that the teachers understand we're not gonna ask them. So for example, three games I went to last week, the gate proceeds were right inside the door, so they didn't have to, they could have SRO at the door as they walk through and then go to pay. And they wouldn't have to have school personnel.
Athletics is pretty easy compared to school day stuff.
Well, and that's, I'm, I'm okay with that, we start off athletics and, you know, let's not jump into something like you said, that, you know, let's not do it if we can't do it correctly. We can't do it at all the schools at one time. So what are we doing now?
Well, we don't, we don't have a motion yet.
I would like to make a motion, can I do that? I'd like to make a motion that we use the 150,000 safety grant, use 120,000 of that for weapons detectors. And the remainder for-
For 20, 20,000.
For radios, for handheld radio.
So nothing to bother the handheld radio?
Yeah.
We can get both of them, that's the only two we can get was 150.
How many metal detectors can we get for 120, enough for two schools?
Two in each high school.
So all three high schools would have it.
Start off with the high schools for after-school events.
And that's if they come in for the bid, we think, hopefully that's going up. Okay, so we have a motion to spend out of the 150,000 safety grant, 120 for weapons detectors, two in each high school. And 20,000, sorry, 30, 29,000 for the handheld radios. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gold, any further discussion?
Well, I'll just make this point, you know, it's hard to stop somebody if they wanna hurt somebody. Most, all your school shootings, if you look from beginning up to daytime, it's happened at elementary schools. I don't know if it's been one at high school or not. It may have. They hit soft targets, that's elementary school, and that's the only thing that bothers them, I wish we had them at all. But having it in North Surry is great. But, you know, I've got children in elementary school and middle school. So I worry about all the children, and I'll just make that point, you gotta start somewhere.
And again, we talked about this, the psychological message you're sending to our students about putting it at every school, is I don't trust you. And we do trust 99%, I think, the 1% that's gonna bring that weapon to school. Like the pre-K, he saw daddy have a cool gun, he don't know, put it in my bag, show my friends at school. Why would he even know what he was doing?
I'd like to get in that third county that he decided he would kill some students at school, because Bob Dodger at elementary school. If I'm gonna pick one way out in the woods anymore, like Westfield or Shoals or St. Ridge.
Well, I think though, if you look at it, the elementary school kids don't really change classes, they go out for PE, they stay inside of buildings. If your high schools were, when they go outside to other buildings, that's what I'm worried about, I'm gonna, need to edit that tape. That's what I'm worried about.
Okay.
We got a motion in a second, then spend the money that, that way for the safety grant, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay, then.
Thank you.
Did you get the motion in a second? Okay, thank you. All right, so we got a couple more. Provide statement for wordman. Uh, for the skip folks.
So board members, three years ago, the school board was allocated 1.75 million dollars from the general assembly for repair and renovation on athletic facilities. At that time, Mr. Gold, Mr. Badgett, along with Robert Nye, went to every middle school, every high school, met with the athletic director, principal, and walked the facilities and created basically a plan to spend these monies. And so we have spent over half of the monies, and what you see today is we, we want to revise that scope of work. And we have the athletic directors, there's some new projects that weren't in the original plan. Those have to be approved by the Office of State Budget Management before we can move forward. Obviously, the costs were staying within our budget, and when we originally did these costs, we were estimating costs on budget items. I mean, it was a big estimation, we had to start somewhere. So, what you see in front of you, for example, at Central Middle School, look, backboard winch system, repaired treadmill, paint mural, smart TVs for weight room, those are new projects that weren't in the original scope. Those are within the conditions of the grant itself, because we can only repair and renovate athletic facilities. But it has to be approved. So, I received board approval on the original plan, and what I'm seeking tonight is board approval on this amended plan that Alder is gonna send to the Office of State Budget Management. So you can see, there's cost updates, and then the new projects for each school here. And probably the most significant is Surrey Central has several new projects, so I want you to just take a look and make sure you're comfortable with all these.
New project?
Yes. Yeah, I'm asking my principals, let's spend all this money and let's get it spent, spent now. And so, there's some new projects and they've gotten quotes on these things.
So with the updated costs, we follow in the 175. We're in it.
Yes.
Any land?
No, no. Our goal is to zero it out.
Has to be spent by the end of this year?
There's not a timeline on when it has to be spent, although I feel like we, we, the sooner the better, because we're benefiting today's students. You know, we're, you'll see some of these projects have been very, very beneficial. Baseball bathrooms at baseball, softball for Surrey Central High School, and now at North Surry.
It's worth less, longer, 600, 500.
That's something we hear from the new grant we asked for.
We've already heard that we didn't get it.
Oh, I did.
Well, Mannerie got theirs, what, two weeks ago, so since they got it, we expected we didn't, and no, we didn't get it.
Got a letter this past week.
We got a letter that we didn't get it. And Mannerie got theirs?
Second time.
I thought you got, that's two they got, two, two year ago.
And we might got one, but then again, theirs are 2 million dollars less, and we're asking for 100, 180. So, my question is, the new projects, was that from cost savings on the other ones that we got a better price? They're not replacing something else that they'd already asked for?
No, they, either they didn't wanna do it, or we saved money, it's budget amendments. And I noticed Surrey Central, they still have 150,000 that they have for repair track and track recondition. We talked about that, they wanna apply that money toward a new track, so that's a choice they made. Yeah, it's really just reallocating, they've spent all their funds on the initial projects, and now here are new projects, and they want to amend their budget. And before we can do that, we have to send in an amended scope of work to the Office of-
We're getting more than we thought we were gonna get, really, the project. Okay, so you're just seeking approval to send it to them for approval?
Yep.
To make the changes?
And then if, if you approve, then we're gonna move forward, so all these new project items, we're gonna purchase. There's one here that's over 30,000, recovered bleachers in varsity gym. That's an 87,000 dollar cost, that's coming out of that money. So, those are the things we'll move forward on, if you approve tonight, and then they approve.
So one more question, we got two shown here at North Surry for employee expense to remove the old press box and add film area, and then to the basketball bleacher repair. Is that what we paid our staff to replace or repair?
Yeah, our maintenance department.
So employee expenses, our maintenance department, we can reimburse?
I only have one, well, three questions.
So, third line down, East Surrey and North Surrey, I haven't looked at Surrey Central, let me get there and see.
Field maintenance, football.
Yeah, field maintenance, football.
Will that be removed because we're redoing the fields anyway?
So, that money, three years ago, we did field maintenance on all of our fields. We spread sand on all the fields, and this is football, baseball, softball. So that money was allocated, and this is something that all, all of them wanted. So, that line item was about 90,000, but at, now at East Surrey, they spent the majority of their field maintenance money on the baseball field.
So it's all been done.
We also- Yeah, it's been, yeah.
Yeah, so this, you're saying it's already spent?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well then I'll make a motion that we approve of.
Oh, yeah, it's all, yes.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Hudson, second by Mr. Hudson, to approve the changes and send it in to the state. Okay. Was it a aye? Any opposed, no? I got a ballgame to do too. All right, wait a minute, one more, that's it, right? Contractor specialized, yeah, this one's, this one we've got to review. Specialized autism education services.
Everybody else sat here beside me.
This is a, this is a tricky one, so we need to talk about this, but then you can get your moment.
The board members, Ms. Fliffin is here to discuss a contract for specialized educational services. This is a somewhat of a unique situation and circumstance, so I'll turn it over to her to seek your approval.
So, I hope you have the contractor, you've been able to review the contract for the ABC of NC School. State policy requires that if, in the very rare circumstance, an LEA cannot meet the needs of a student's IP in order for them to make progress, then it is the LEA's responsibility to find educational services in which that can occur. This is my fifth year as director in this district, my 20th year in Surrey County Schools, involved in the exceptional children's department. And this is the first time that I'm aware of that we've had to go to this level of service. So we do have a middle school student who has significant needs across the board in many different ways, very unique situation. I'll be careful not to have lots of information because I know that we're recording. We have been on a process with this student for the last two years to meet his needs to the maximum extent able in any, in our school system. And we have been unable to do that, to meet his needs, and to make sure that he is making growth in his educational. So what we are proposing is a contract with the ABC of NC School, which is in Lexington-Salem. It is a specialized school for autism, students with significant autism. And they have very specialized training, and their staff has very specialized training, in small ratios in order to support students. We have educated our staff, our staff's been through extensive training. We've had consultants come in from outside companies to observe and help our staff adjust and try to meet the needs of this particular student. The state has been in to observe and try to support us with this student. And we still have kinda ended up at this point. You can see the details of the contract here, I have lots of specific- I have lots of specific information as much as I can provide on a recording. But really, I'm here to answer the questions that you may have in this particular situation.
And you, of course, name and diagnosis, we don't need to get into, for me to do that, has to be in a closed session.
That's correct.
You're going to help us, if there's any questions, you just tell us what we can.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Who takes care of the cost, you know, getting a child or at Winston?
The district, the district.
We, they'll give us the money for that.
No. Well, we do have the opportunity, um, there are some special state reserve funds that are set aside for, um, special circumstances like this. We have to exhaust all of the funds that are allocated for that student at the junior ed level and at the special education level before we can access those funds. But we are required, if the district makes the determination that, um, we are not able to meet the needs of this student, then we are required for transportation and the cost of tuition.
Were we talking about, like, one of the new vehicles we just purchased? We'd take them to Winston every morning, pick them up every afternoon?
This particular student has not been successful in transportation in a district. So we actually currently contract with that parent to transport them back and forth to their current services. And so that's how that would look for us moving forward, that we would contract. Ms. Samples has a contract that we use sometimes for kiddos who require parent transportation and we pay mileage to the parents to and from.
Got you.
Mm-hmm.
So we just pay a mileage?
Yes, sir. We, Ms. Samples draws that up, we have it detailed from the point of their base school to the point of the facility that we're transporting to and then back. Um, and then they keep up with a log, a daily log, so if they don't attend a day, we don't pay that much.
How long's the contract for?
Uh, the contract doesn't really have a specific timeline on it. It's an enter and to date and there's really no close date unless the, um, particular tuition rates change or something about the, the contract would change. So this is the twenty-three, twenty-four contract. If there were no changes to the twenty-four, twenty-five contract, we wouldn't necessarily have to enter into a brand-new contract with this facility. It's not intended for this to be long-term. The goal is for the student to be able to go and receive the intensive services needed. And then the goal is to eventually come back to us and that we can pick up from where that institution left off with their specialized training.
Now, which, which service type does this child lead?
Well, current.
It doesn't matter, I mean, the child's going to have it, they're going to have it.
Correct. Um, currently, it will be the one-to-one classroom aid. However, um, he will not start at six hours per day, he'll start at two hours per day and that is calculated. So you're looking at that bottom, at that bottom number.
So that was six hours, so it'd be a third of that?
Yes.
Okay. Because at that rate, it's fifty-three dollars a nap. For an eight.
Well, it, it's, it's all-inclusive, so it's the instruction plus the aid. So you'll see, you know, group instruction with no aid is the thirty-three seventy.
So it's not all of them, it's the bottom, okay.
That's right.
So one-third of that per month.
Correct.
Got you.
Until the time increases. And what it looks like is, um, the district is involved, the district keeps them as a student. We're responsible for the IEP and managing that. I would go every thirty days to a site visit to observe and to meet with the staff of the institution to discuss progress. And then it is at the determination of the IEP team and the district whether that, that space is serving his needs. And then if not, we would have to determine another course of action moving from there.
So you have the funding, you have the transportation, and all you need is for us to say, go with the contract?
Correct.
So the funding, is that under the federal program that would reimburse us for ECs?
So the funding will come from, so we have to match, you know, whatever the, or we have to pay out the cost that that student brings in. So whatever that is for general, the average that a general student would bring in, plus the amount that a student from Exceptional Children, they're two different funds that we get money from, the state and the federal fund. So once those are added together, the district is responsible for that. And the state will help us with any additional cost up to fifty percent.
Okay.
Got you.
No, you go ahead. I was just wondering, realistically, you're the EC expert and, and our hope is that the student is able to come back.
Yes.
Is, is that something you think is doable? I mean, you, you've probably worked with the child without giving us any specifics. Is that something we can realistically expect, that that child will come back to us and we can educate them in a way that, that meets their need?
I would say with my expertise at this point, it'd be hard for me to say that in this session. Just because I wouldn't want anybody to take something I said as predetermined and how well. ABC of NC is a great program, we have some of our kiddos go there for outside services. I've visited with the family, I've been there, it's an amazing opportunity, but it is a very unique situation. And so we are hopeful that that is, that will be beneficial for this student and that. And Surrey County is where the family wants the student to be and definitely would do that student to be.
So the family is, is okay with this as well?
Uh, the family is aware, yes, yes. We've discussed it at several IEP meetings and, um, you know, as our, as our services have increased over the last two years to try to meet the need, um, you know, this discussion that this could be a possibility has come, we've had constant conversation around it.
Well, I've known you a long time and I tell this is something that's bothered you, you have to become us. So I, I know that it's not something that's taken lightly. And I, I just believe that you all feel that's what has to be done, that's what we got to do. And I have no idea for the child.
And that, that would be my question, in your professional opinion, is the, this is the best we can do for this child?
At this time, yes, sir.
That's good enough for me.
And, um, our department takes great pride in educating, there are thousands of students in my program and this EC side. And it is, it has been difficult for all of us to, um, come to this and.
Well, please don't take this as a failure.
Oh, I don't, I don't, and we, there, there are laws in place to protect the rights of families and students and I'm thankful for that and thankful that there are opportunities. But our goal is to get them back as quick as we can.
Well, I, I think if you do it, I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Your heart is on your sleeve.
Yes, it is.
It is, yes, sir, sometimes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's always hard, we know, and, and that's what we tell the person we talk to. Our staff cares as much about these children as anybody. And it's obvious to see that from your reaction tonight, so thank you, thank you for caring about them so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Motion second, any further discussion? We approve the contract? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Got it, unanimous. All of them have answered, adjourned. Okay. Who wants to make the motion?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
No, you got to make a motion.
Not a motion to adjourn, it's not even second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, let's go home.